Then, in that case, I'd like to call the Concord School Committee meeting to order. I'll note that we are being recorded and broadcast. Welcome and thanks to those of you who are here. We're starting off with Concord tonight for a little bit, and then our Carlyle brethren will join us in a little while for the joint part of the meeting as of 7:00. So we're starting off tonight. We have one public comment here. We'd love to start with that. Lynda, come on up if you want to come up to the end. Oh, oops, is one of those on, Jared?
Ah, we'll make it on.
And, Lynda, when you start, if you could just state your name and address, that'd be great.
She wrote it down this time, because I know I always forget.
Yeah, right.
Lynda Neiman, 59 Mall Drive, Motters Out Front. I wanted to speak on two issues, the electric buses and parking lot. There was a good amount of people that wrote in a few weeks ago about the electric buses. I'm sorry I couldn't talk last time because I had a really bad head cold and I just was talking nonstop. It was like chain-eating, pretty much. Anyway, so there's a lot of people who wrote in asking for a transition of our diesel fleet to clean electric buses. And I really appreciate that the school committee along with Dr. Hunter has reached out to Motters Out Front. And we're really eager to help with this issue in any way we can. You know, it's a very difficult and complicated issue. And we're really looking forward to seeing the new buses come online, which we just heard about. And then, very quickly, about the parking lot debate. Just observing the passionate debate on the committee about this issue. And it may seem like a contentious issue for you guys. You guys have gone very late. I really appreciate it. But to an outside observer, it shows a very thoughtful deliberative process. And I just want to know that we really appreciate it, that you're considering the ways that we need to integrate these issues with our larger sustainability values. Unfortunately, in this time and place in history, we really have to consider everything we do in the context of climate change and sustainability. With all the news of Australia burning and floods and fires, it's just very exciting. And everything we do has to be viewed in light of that. And then, as far as the parking lot issue, we really want to know how we can help. And we've reached out to Dr. Hunter, and we're trying to do what we can to help with this issue with surveys to the parents and hopefully to the students, or what are the barriers to riding a bus, and just any way we can help. I also wanted to just state that we don't want to be adversarial in any way. We know that sustainability makes your job harder, but we want to help in any way we can. Again, sustainability, I've heard several times, it's education versus sustainability. And it really kind of makes me sad to hear that. It doesn't really have to be. It's just one of those things that you have to consider early and often. It might require a little extra work up front, or a lot of work up front.
Yeah.
Right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you in particular for your offer to help. And it's great to have those collaborative relationships with groups in town. We'll take you off.
Yes, I know you will. And I'm sorry, I have to leave early.
No problem. We'll share your comments with the Carlyle folks as well as it relates to the joint.
I'll probably still be here when you're done, if you want to come back.
Yeah.
She's certain.
Yeah. She's been here and watched us. Okay, moving on to old business then. We'll start with a middle school update. Once again, things are moving along well with our building committee. So we had a meeting last week and went through, basically, kind of, what's going to happen over the next few months. And I'll update at a high level that the next couple of months are very exciting. The design team is really starting to get to work, use the information that we're already collecting, and will be bringing us a series of things to look at and start to narrow down options at our next meeting even. So they've been, at this point, still collecting information. We talked about the forum. We had a great forum. They and Dr. Hunter and the team have also spent, is it three days now, with staff?
Two full days.
Two full days and a half day.
And a half day on either side.
Yeah.
The last part is to come, Thursday.
Yep. With staff, all staff at the middle school, collecting a lot of great input, excitement, addressing concerns, that kind of stuff too, but really mostly collecting input. They've been doing site and actual ground research over at the site already. And at our next building committee meeting, they are planning to come to us with some test site options, which is basically options for siting of the building, placement of the building on the Sanborn site, on the grounds. You know, is it over in the corner of the field? Is it on the edge of the hill? That kind of thing. So that's really exciting. And our next meeting, we'll start to look at something that detailed. And at the following meeting in March, by that point, we'll have had a lot of feedback on what should go into the building. And they'll start to bring us some options in terms of design concepts. So we won't be looking at, you know, full building designs yet, but it will be design concepts in terms of, you know, is it a full-size gym? And how big is the auditorium? And what kinds of things are important to us? And then we start talking cost trade-offs and all that. Is that a good, would you add to that?
Yeah, and I can fill in a little more just on the educational visioning work. We had two very packed days of just, it was funny. One of the designers, it sort of feels like speed dating. It's just kind of, you know, just this rotating group of teachers constantly, all day long, literally from 7:30 in the morning till 4:30 or so at night.
Wow.
But each group really came in and had done some thoughtful discussions prior to coming, which I think was really valuable. Departments came in with a vision for teaching and learning that I was really loving hearing and all those great seeds. Boy, as we capture those of the innovation and wish lists of what they could be doing if they had a different space, it was really exciting. We got into some really practical pieces in terms of what they might have for space and what they have now versus what they might have. It was really, really valuable. I know the designers felt like they'd gotten a lot of information that was going to inform their design as they start to really go back and talk about that. So that's what they're actively doing. We're meeting just a leadership team, professionals primarily, on Thursday to debrief and talk on themes. And that'll be some of the, more of the information we can share out as they've aggregated all that really raw data from last week. So it was really exciting. I think the middle school staff left feeling very much like we did. It feels really real, having had all those discussions and talking about what we'd like to see coming, going down there. Everyone was reminded cost will be a discussion point too. Because I think if you told them all of their wish lists up and the sustainability, whatever, they're going to put it all together and probably have a building we can't quite afford. So we're trying to be sure that the architects are designing within the scope of our initial targets. And then we'll look at what the trade-offs are and how we get there. So things are really picking up pace, is the way it feels, to get to some of these benchmarks that we've set to have decisions to make.
Yeah.
That's great.
It is, it's great. And I guess on that note of timing too, one of the other things we were talking about at the last building committee meeting was the timing of a special town meeting when we'll come back to ask. We don't have that set yet. It's still looking like sometime early fall. But a few of us are going to gather soon and put some details around that, work with the town to figure out the best timing for it.
We're meeting with Stephen Crane tomorrow and Cory in the Town Clerk's office. Ultimately, being a presidential election year, the September 1st is the primary and the November 3rd is the election. So those are really target anchor dates to work with, which in a way is complicated and in a way easier. So I think we're going to navigate that and probably come to some recommendations for, certainly for the next building committee meeting in terms of that. Other things we're honing in on, enrollment numbers, weighing how we get to that because enrollment in the elementary schools is down a bit. So we could pull back off of that initial 750 number. But we also have to factor in the new housing starts, and especially West Concord and the private school enrollment. So I've kind of put all that raw data out to the entire leadership team. We're going to bring it to the building committee next month and try to really solidify enrollments. So we're getting some big decisions made over the next short term that's really going to drive the design of the building.
I think I asked this again, but what's the potential, if our, you know, Thoreau with his new development could easily fill up and then spill over to, you know, where our levers are getting less and less?
In terms of the elementary school?
Yes.
I, I'm not worried yet, knowing what we're doing now to rebalance and the fact that Thoreau is comfortably sitting between Willard and Alcott right now. I think we're okay. We need to get a better sense of, what I do, well, let me qualify that. What I know of housing starts is very rarely do all the kids land at the elementary school. Often the new, the folks moving into communities have older kids as well. So I, short of my magic crystal ball, I think we're okay at the moment.
That one's a big one.
Yeah. And then we'll build the middle school, knowing we need to be able to absorb.
You would never want to bus those kids to another school.
Yeah, no. And walkers on the road.
Yeah. Okay. And I just had it, so how are you compiling the feedback through the forum? Because there seemed like, to me, there were some very new things that you all probably had.
Yeah, so actually, Pat Nelson and I have been compiling the feedback, and I'm going to give credit, also with help from Lynda Neiman, who took great notes and sent us her notes as well. And we've been, so incorporating from various people's notes.
There was film, so you could just watch the notes.
And there's film. But just the process of summarizing. We are aggregating a lot of that and are going to bring it back to the group and as a summary of themes. And then that can, that can go up. We will figure out what we do and we'll probably post that somehow publicly so everybody can see it. So we will definitely come back with, here's what we heard. And we will also discuss it at the next public forum, which is February 27th. So on the 27th, there'll be a follow-up public forum. And the goal there is to say, okay, here's the feedback that we've heard. Here are the themes that we understand as desires and needs. Here are the things that we're looking to accomplish. And we can kind of, at that point, talk about the information that we have so far and get further feedback on it.
I just, I don't want to deliberate, it's a separate committee, but I know a couple of groups, CPAC, for example, asks to be involved in, you know, when they kick that can too far down the road as you're making your design decisions. So I don't know.
So we actually agreed with you that that sounded pretty urgent. So I reached out to CPAC the following day. And by the end of last week, we've set Thursday, the 30th, at 1:30 for an open CPAC meeting. And SMMA will be there to take that input directly. I also reached out to Jean Gold, thank you, at the Commission for Disabilities and invited her to attend as well.
Excellent, thank you.
We heard that urgency, responded.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Cory, anything else that I am missing?
No, I think you've covered it. I would urge that people go to the school website. And one link away is the building project. And people are trying to be diligent about getting information on that website as promptly as possible. For example, that meeting that you referred to is up.
Yep, the links to all of our meetings are up there.
The next regular meeting of the full building committee is February 13th. And that's at 7:30 a.m. here. And check the website for subcommittee meetings because they're underway. And the only other thing I would say is that we have an unusual situation in that we're trying to move with all deliberate speed, meaning quickly, but we're being deliberate about it. Which means, understandably, because of the magnitude of the project, people are very eager for answers. And we don't have all the answers because we have this mechanism to produce the questions, produce the answers, include a lot of people. So as onerous as it is, we're going to ask people to get involved, but understand there is a large process that you and I and everybody else has to plug into. We appeal to people to plug into that process so that everybody can be heard.
Yes, absolutely. Echo the encouragement to check out the website and to come to things. I would actually also share, and I'll have to, I'll share it with the whole building committee as well, but just at a meeting with a group of the League of Women Voters the other day, they gave us some feedback and shared some really nice feedback, actually, saying it felt like so far this building committee was really doing a great job of collaborating and that the process felt very transparent to the extent that some people who were concerned about it moving too fast even felt better now because the process has been very clear and collaborative. So that was nice feedback to hear. To us, it means good. We're off to a good start and we continue to push hard on that front.
And people can join the process at any point.
At any time, yeah.
You can have missed a meeting or 10 meetings and still pick up where you wish and start to join us.
Yeah, and I'll just give the League a plug. We are there first Friday, February 7th, at the library.
No, it's across the street at another.
It's across the street there.
Correct me if I'm correct.
The West Concord Duty Church.
I will be there. Mike Carroll, part of Hill's OPM leadership team. And Matt Root and Kate Hanley of the Sustainability Subcommittee. They're all three there as a panel. And looking forward to sharing an interactive dialogue with the community.
Yeah. They host good events, so that should be a good one, February 7th. See, I think that's about it on the middle school. Unless there are any other questions? All right.
Yes, how do people communicate with the building committee? Rather than waiting for a meeting, what if they've got something to share right now?
If you have something to share, there is a link on the building committee page to contact the building committee. Anyone can do that at any time. And there's also an email address to email directly, which is, oh. Go to the page, and there's a link.
Go to the page, okay, thank you.
Go to the project, building project page on the district site. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Cory. Then, I guess we're on to various reports. Jared?
So in your packets, you see both the various report by 1,000 function as well as the 100 function. One has about 50 lines, the other one has nine lines. As you can see, we are currently in budget. This is the time of year, though, that we start looking at all of our open POs. We start working with Special Ed to make sure we're caught up in all of our tuitions and making sure the encumbrances are starting to go down. So it's good to see right now that we are, we are in budget. You do have a negative right now in the progress with other districts, which is all of our tuition lines. We're still working those out. That will go down, will have some offsets. By the April 1st meeting, when I provide the last, the third quarter's worth, our third quarter worth of various reports, that will most likely be at least have a cent in it. But we're just watching it right now. But as you can see, everything else is in budget. If you do go to the 1,000, the 100 function, there are some that are in the negatives, but there will be offsets. For example, the 2305 is all of our classroom teachers. You see a negative there. But there's a positive in the 2325, which is the substitutes account. So we need to make some transfers to cover those. And other little ones, right under that, the 2320 therapeutic services, that's in the negative. That's our contracted services for Special Ed. It's also something that we may see the encumbrances go down. We are watching those. We have identified things to potentially transfer in there. And then last but not least, this report includes all of our pre-encumbrances. So it includes all of our pre-encumbrances, which means things that are in this report, to give you a true value of where we're at, are things that are encumbered that really hasn't even got to Laurie and I yet. So we could deny these purchases and they would go off. But we want to show the, what are true costs of what is in the system right now. We're in pretty good shape. We're watching it.
So pre-encumbrance could be effectively a request?
Correct. That might be sitting at the principal's. And he or she is sitting on that, just waiting, and it hasn't gotten to us yet, but it's showing up on this report.
Okay.
And those will go, well, usually I don't like pre-encumbrances open for more than 60 days. So usually I'll run a report every month or two and I'll just say, hey, this has been open since August. What are you going to do with it? And they'll either close it or they'll push it forward.
Love it. Keeping things on track.
So if I might, Jared, who among us, you, Laurie, fellow members of the committee, have had time to do more than look at the numbers and actually look in an analytical way? Any patterns here, any concerns?
No. Mid-year is always the toughest because there's a lot where it's over-exaggerated.
Sure, exactly.
So I promise you, though, that me, Ian, and Nikki are going through this. Nikki has really started to grasp it this year. So she sees everything before it comes to me. Make sure it's, they have money in the account, that it's in the right account, and that the PO and the bill match the P.O.
So we watch it at that really granular level. I'm approving POs, which sometimes they wish I was at the front end of the approval and not the tail end. Because if I deny it, that's a lot of people I already did some work. So we're always watching balances and making sure, certainly the bottom line stays black. But when, you know, transfers and things like that are always being suggested. Jared, I don't see a PO that comes to me in the middle. They give, they work that through before it gets to me, even if the line might not have had enough money. They've initially suggested a transfer already.
Could you help me a little bit more with the 9,000?
Sure.
Was the adjustment overly optimistic? That would be a casual interpretation, but what's it really mean?
It means I still have other offsets to do. And I'm working with the Special Ed department to make sure that the number of the encumbrances is the actual amount before I go ahead and transfer another 200,000 in there. You see that I did transfer out the 563 of...
596?
596 at the beginning of the year, optimistically. And then the things have changed, so I need to identify some costs to put back in. But circuit breaker, 240 grant, money's still coming in that we can offset it with. Also, I have not offset the preschool grant, which will offset preschool teachers, that will, so the preschool tuition will offset preschool teachers' salaries that would then open up to potentially offset, say, preschool contract services, et cetera.
Because you remember, may remember, this is our first year of having access to that revolving account. So he hasn't accounted for that additional funding stream.
And that was 100, was it?
140.
140, okay.
And then there'll be some utility offsets that we always, you know, in the springtime, take a look at, food service.
Good, thank you.
Other questions from the committee? I'll just put up there at a high level, Jared. I don't want this to sound dumb, obviously. As you move things, that means that they weren't exactly planned as such. But are there any here that are big surprises, things that are on us?
No. And the thing is, is because we're still have accounts that, in a way, mean the same thing. We have duplicates. They could be charging something that might be a supply to one supply line when it perfectly could have been to another supply line and just trying to keep up.
So some of it is still that. No, no big surprises in this.
No.
Great?
No.
Terrific. Other questions? Then we are good. So the next thing on our agenda is to vote on the contract for the bus financing. However, since Jared is going to be talking to us all, the entire regional, sorry, the joint committee, the regional committee also, in just a few minutes about transportation. And that could end up answering some questions that could come up in this vote. And there's a similar vote for the region. I would suggest and take a motion as such, if anybody is interested, that we move that item to later in the agenda with the regional action items. Second?
No.
Just for Concord. Any discussion on that? And all in favor? Hi.
Opposed?
opposed? All right, so we will move that item to the action items in the joint agenda. And that means, since we are six minutes early for opening the regional meeting, we're going to take a six-minute break and we'll be back shortly. See? Hey, are my meetings efficient or what?
Make a motion for most, for the six-minute break.
Okay, quick break. We can't officially start before our posted time.
No, and you don't have Carlyle.
And we don't have Carlyle over the break.
My Lord. Dr. Hunter really...
Your detail.
The forum is nothing, man.
Yeah.
Dave says you'll be here at 7:15. Start with that.
David said 7:15, so...
Is that a...
Is that a... Oh, good.
Bye, Emma.
Where did you get a question, Mark?
I know. I actually Google this. Pretty proud of it.
Well, five minutes.
Hello, Emma, how are you?
I'm good.
Supposedly the door is open.
We're done. We finished a few minutes early, so we're taking a little break.
Great.
Yes. In fact, we're glad you're...
It's our time.
Yeah, I know. I said, don't not run efficient meetings. In fact, we're glad you're here early, Emma, because David is apparently running late. So without either of you, we couldn't have started at 7:00. We will start on time and you can join us. I'm excited for our next one today.
I wrote to... Wilson?
Spencer?
Yeah. And I said, I mentioned your name as well as the other.
There you go. I don't know if name dropping might be able to do any good, you call me. You're welcome to try.
It's the best I can do. I cannot...
Use what you got, even if it's only me.
Name dropping is good to certain level.
You never know.
On the leverage of the name. You may even say that if I needed something, it's super important. So David told me that. It's leverage there. I don't know what's better.
Not sure that'll work, but... That's not in-town, Mike.
I hope. Sorry. But kissing is here, not the water. It's saying, I took him from 10 o'clock in the morning until 6 o'clock in the evening.
That's a good choice, it's fun.
Let's start.
And it's 7:00. Yes? Oh, that's okay. All right. Welcome back, it's 7 o'clock, so we can officially begin the joint part of the meeting.
Bring the Concord-Carla Regional School Committee meeting to order. Please note that we're being recorded. We're already in session for Concord.
Yes, and we have one member yet to show up, but said we should start.
Yes, so no public comments. We did have one at the beginning of the Concord meeting that somewhat related to the high school, from Motters Out Front, but buses, electric buses, and parking lot. And thanking us for the outreach and the... the outreach and the work we're doing with them, and we thank them right back. So no further public comment. Can we hear from the beat at the high school?
Yes, I wasn't able to find out the sports academy because of the long weekend, people are away, but I guess the big thing right now is just right in the middle of exams, so most people are talking about it. Stress from that.
That's about the talk of the town.
And then in our last center meeting, we kind of just discussed, we saw that there's a new calendar proposed, and we kind of discussed parts of that a bit. I don't think, I think the only thing that some people were concerned about the half-day on the 23rd, but nothing really big about that.
The half-day on the 23rd of what?
December.
Of December.
What's the concern?
I think some people are worried about, like, I think whether it's worth it to come all the school that day, or the half-day, or whether it's worth it to count as a day of school, and like some classes, you know, we have to catch up and stuff like that. Like, I don't know, it's not much to say about that.
Say it's a day at the end of the year.
Yeah. People are also thinking that.
Great.
Okay, recognitions.
So our director of special services just stepped out to bring in our guests. We're really excited with the 18 to 22-year-old program that we started this year here at Ripley, so they're housed around the corner. When they're onsite, which they're out and about in the community and such quite a bit, so I am going to turn it over to who's... Okay, go on up. So we're fortunate enough to have, it looks like, three members of the staff and two students with us. I'll let them introduce themselves and hear what they've been up to.
Great.
Great?
Yeah, you want to come over here? That's good.
If you need the screen, stand over that way and look this way, I think, and then the camera can get you too. So you're all on TV, just so you know.
We know.
Yes?
No, you're not.
Very excited.
Well, we can start with introductions.
Sure.
So can we start with introductions? Sure.
Hi, my name is Ben. I'm a scholar in the launch program. I graduated from Lethal in 2019.
And I'm Heather Smalling, the classroom teacher within the launch program.
My name is Claire, and I'm in the launch program. I graduated from CCHS in 2019.
I'm Heather Homatier, and I'm the behavior specialist in the launch program.
I'm Heather Mahoney. I'm the transition specialist for CCHS, and I'm the launch program coordinator. We didn't actually require that they all be named together.
We have a majority. We win.
What is launch? A new program developed for students after finishing four years of high school. What is a planning launch? Social activities, practicing new job skills, learn how to do stuff on our own, and transition program. I made this slide all by myself.
My style.
So as Claire mentioned, there's a variety of components to the transition program for launch. There's self-determination, social skill building, functional academics, independent living skills, pre-vocational exploration, career explanation, community integration, and cultural competency. So we cover a lot of different things. And upon completion of four traditional years of high school, a student typically from pathways will transition over, oftentimes entitled to staying until they're 22. That, the qualifying factors for that are passing MCAS, meeting their graduation requirements, and then following along with Jesse's requirements for free and appropriate education. So all of those are the components to being eligible and entitled for the transition program. So the launch program was developed to continue to support students in achieving their post-secondary visions through community-based learning, as that is kind of that natural progression for when you leave high school, much like a lot of the skills that we have. Some individuals need a little extra attention on perfecting those areas.
So one of the first components we're just going to talk about was self-determination. And each person has individual choice, and so one of the things to start off with is doing an interest assessment and just preferences, learning what individuals want, what their goals, what they're interested in doing, so we can design the program around each person. And so we make individualized goals, and also each person has their own individualized schedule, so some people may be doing, they don't be out in the community, while other people are already back at the program. And it just gives them the exercise and their control of the individualized services, which is an important part of the program. And then the advocacy, teaching them about all of their resources that are available to them as they move into adult, closer to adult services, and teaching them about their human rights, and of course, with our current events, learning about political awareness and how they can continue to advocate for their rights.
So social skills is another large component of what we work on. We do have a speech-language pathologist that does a social pragmatics group with us once a week, and then throughout everyday programming, we're continuously working on social skills development. We also, in this particular photo, we partner with the transition program at Littleton High School to kind of build those social connections in hopes that peers will, you know, continue after they leave and make plans. So that photo is us over at Littleton High School. Their transition program is in a room called the Bistro, and they're playing a game while they're planning on our next activity. So they all plan the activities together, so it's interest-based on what they're looking to learn more about. So our next slide is about functional academics, which is what we focus on in the classroom, so learning all of those functional skills in order to be, of those like skills. And Ben would like to share the things that he likes to learn in the classroom.
I like learning, oh, I think that, and writing home notes.
So those are some things that we work on regularly in our classroom, how to advocate for yourself and tell the people that you're going close to what you have done throughout the day. Some of the other things we work on in our current events, like Heather mentioned, teaching them how to pull facts from important pieces of information, email writing, money management, measuring, all very academic things that are focused on life skills.
So independent living skills, this is a very wide area that continues to be worked on every day, so exercise, nutrition, kitchen skills. Some students may do independent cooking, so for instance, I meet with Claire once a week, we do some cooking in the pathway so she can build those independent skills. We also use the consumer science kitchen over in the middle of school, so that students have access to, you know, using different community resources while building their skills, time management, decision-making, problem-solving, really developing those skills so that when an individual turns 22 and leaves the program, they're as independent as possible.
How I mentioned what I was doing in these pictures. Grow cheese, do zumba, and find a clothes for the interview.
So when we're doing different community-based activities, so in one of the photos, Claire is doing a budgeting lesson where she's also shopping for an interview outfit, picking out what's appropriate, knowing clothing sizes. You know, you have a budget, how much can you spend? Do you have a pair of shoes at home that you can use? Or do you need that new pair of shoes for that interview? You never really know. And then there she is doing some independent cooking, and then Ben and Harold, they're doing some zumba in the classroom, which seems to be a favorite. We've gone there...
Lifelong health and fitness, the ways that we like to stay active. The next slide is about our pre-vocational exploration, so getting our individuals in the program ready to transition into the community to do these vocational skills. We have established a pre-vocational lab where they follow a like vocational routine, they use a timesheet to sign in, they then choose a job from a choice board and complete that job independently with staff support. So the next slide is also just a student sorting envelopes by alphabet, our timesheet board, and a snippet of the choices that we have. It's really great to foster independence, so they learn their routine, learn skills across different areas of vocations, so business and marketing, computer technology, construction, industrial, and processing and production. And then they can transfer that to job sites where their strengths are.
What launch students do for fun? Burn Friday's future activities and go out into job sites.
So as I mentioned, we do a lot of community integrative experiences, a lot of community-based learning, so working on recreational development, career exploration, individual employment. We have a few students that are competitively employed. The students plan their activities together so that it really is interest-based, and they're really in the planning process of it, so it's not just us planning and then telling them what to do. But the primary focus is continuing to work on building their independent living skills and then their vocational skills, so as they're leaving, there's independent members of the communities. So this slide is a variety of collages of what we have done on Fridays. So one photo is we took the commuter rail into Faneuil Hall just before the Christmas holiday, and as you can see, students had to take the commuter rail in, learn about how to behave on the commuter rail. They, prior to that, had looked up the schedule for it. And then we've also taken the commuter rail over to West Concord, we've gone to the movies, and then we've had a wonderful opportunity to plan a Friendsgiving with our friends from Littleton High that Ms. Ruby was able to join us for, so that was a really wonderful experience that the students enjoyed. So some of the other career exploration activities are the community vocational sites, so we do have a few of those that students get to explore, the Council on Aging, Buddy Dog, the Goodnow Library, Drumland Farm, Discovery Museum, and Cooperative Elder Services. Those have really been great partnerships where students have been able to develop their skills, also educate community members about how capable they are at doing a variety of things, and really bridging that gap between school and the community. So those have really been excellent opportunities. So you can see Claire is over at Buddy Dog, where she is walking one of the...
Small, smallest dog.
Yeah, one of the small dogs. And then in the other photo, we have Alec, who's visiting with some of the chickens at Drumland Farm. And in these photos, so at Discovery Museum, they offer a wide variety of different skills for students to develop. Oftentimes, we could be out raking leaves, doing landscaping, painting, as you can see. George of its Tyler's doing some painting of the deck. George is preparing some arts and crafts activities for the students in their activity labs, because they go through a lot of different arts and crafts. So Discovery Museum has really been a wonderful community partner as well. In addition to our vocational opportunities in the community, we do have a few students that are independently and competitively employed. One student has been at TJ Maxx for over two years, where he is working independently with a periodic checking with his manager, but continues to be excelling. We have another student who is independently employed at Crosby's. They have also been a fantastic, both of these businesses have been wonderful community partners. The other student at Crosby's has been there for a little bit over a year and has really thrived there and is looking to, we're working with him on scheduling a meeting with his manager to try other opportunities within the business to kind of broaden his skill base.
And so to tie everything that we're doing together, we see it through the lens of cultural competency. We want to be responsive in a positive way. So we have group and individual expectations, and they're posted in the girl pictures. So everybody knows what the expectations of the girl are, whether in the girl or in the community. And some people do have individual expectations in addition to this, and we just create a proactive and responsive environment, knowing what people's interests are and what their needs are, we can be proactive and be needs-based, and making sure everybody has what they need. And we focus on social emotional learning to make sure everybody can engage in coding skills and strategies and knowing what works best for every person. And we use this, we tie it up and together with positive behavior supports. Individual, does need an individual plan, we work as a team, and we build the plan with the individual and the family. And just really taking a person-centered approach to make, to build a program around each individual person, to make it what they need it to be. So to promote everyone's participation in this presentation, all of the individuals in the program are asked to kind of contribute in a way, even if they couldn't be here by writing down what they like about the new program. And so this is one of the individuals in our program at the radio station, and then he also shared that he likes working at the Goodnow Library and Drumland Farm, as well as our, working on our current events articles, which is a routine that we have established from the very beginning of this, you know, conception of this program. He also loves math, leisure time, and playing basketball in the gym here, which we can access, so he shared that. We also had some time in the radio station where the students were able to record their own holiday show that was aired, like, recorded and aired during the holiday time, which was really cool. Next is...
What I like about launch is volunteering at Buddy Dog, working at the school store, and cooking.
All right, next is Phil. So, want to share what you...
I like about lunch is, what I choose as, learn trade-ins, and working at Goodnow Library.
The library? Yeah. The next individual is a picture of them working at one of their external vocational sites, and he shared with us that he likes working, the Voq Lab, which is that pre-vocational lab within our classroom, where they learn as a team before going into the community, cooking, and going into the community. Another individual shared that they also like working in the Voq Lab and working out at the Voq sites, and specifically, he actually specifically named one of the jobs that we have in the Voq Lab, which is document sorting. So I have to organize my mail into whether I've paid it, it needs to be paid, if I've dealt with it or not, so it's kind of practicing that skill, and he likes sorting himself. And then I think that's...
You could do something out of it.
More fun. And then last, but definitely not least, is a slide. Do you want to talk about this last slide, the picture?
Yes.
Sure. Where did we go on one of our first trips as a launcher?
They went to the French coast.
Yeah. And this is a place that Ben had a connection with when he was at his previous school, so that's why we made that. We made that community street. Yeah. So that's our, that's our program.
Oh, my gosh. That's just wonderful. Would you take any comments or questions from many members? It's so wonderful to hear about everything that you're doing. Do you guys have comments or questions?
Well, it's very clear you work very hard, and you can have some fun too while you're working hard.
Doesn't feel like work.
Yeah.
And you describe skills that all of us are working on. Really, they're so important for all of us, so we're very, very proud of the work you do. Question I have, you had and other school leaders had a vision for what was possible, and now, now it's real. You've all made it real, the students and the teachers have made it real. Has that vision changed? Have you enlarged your confidence in what's possible because of what you've achieved already?
I mean, I actually think that, I think that the sky is the limit when it comes to the potential that students have and the ability that we have to grow the program even more. And then as that's happening, continue to develop additional connections within the community and really student-centered the program. We've, like, you know, this is the first year for the program, so we've really, the students have been a significant... students have been a significant part of developing it as well, which has really been wonderful. They've been part of creating the classroom and putting all those pieces and kind of having their legacy so that, you know, they're the first members of the program. So as they continue on, we envision them being able to speak to students and pathways about their experience to get them excited about joining the program as well. So kind of just like paying that piece forward so that the excitement continues to be there.
Well, we're very grateful for Claire and Ben joining us, joining you tonight. Thank you.
I just want to give a shout out to all of the adults. Literally Ruth Grooby walked in here the second week in July and I opened Room 1, which was not cleaned out yet. And said, "This is where the 18 to 22 program's going to be, that you're going to open in time for the stars." And Ruth did what she does, she's, "Okay." And Heather was already at the high school, so we're going to have her sat there. And then she did some amazing hiring processes and we got the right people in the right place. And wow, did they take, you know, literally sand and make this enormous sand castle. So we're just really grateful for all the expertise they brought to it and all the extraordinary work you did in a really short amount of time. So, nothing but exceptional.
It is wonderful. And Ben and Claire, you did a fabulous job presenting for us. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we can't let them leave without saying how much we love having them at Ripley. Speaking of community, the offices here thoroughly enjoy having a program here, they go over and party with them and do crafts with them, come back and everybody's got souvenirs and it's just been great. So we're glad to have, have them here.
I really wanted to commend you on funding those opportunities in community for students so they can be fully present.
We're hoping to grow. Year one, first semester.
Oh yeah, thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you so much. That's great stuff. If we didn't have so much other stuff to do, I just want to keep them here all year again.
So we've got, next thing on the agenda is reading of the minutes from joint meeting on 12, 18, 19. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Is that moved for both committees? Or second?
Second of both. Any discussion, comments, additions, deletions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And, well, all, let's do them separately. All in favor for Concord?
Aye.
So the minutes are approved by both committees. Share, Liz, are you Mr. Halt?
The only thing I would mention is the town caucus is next Monday, the 27th, 7 o'clock. Nominations for one open seat on the school committee, one on the select board, nomination for town moderator, and I'm not sure if it's one for housing or not, but those are the...
I don't think so, I think so.
Those are the ones that are up, 7 o'clock in the, in the main room at the townhouse. Always a festive affair.
Definitely. I would just mention, I guess, I...
It's 7:30. It's always good to be early, I just pulled it up.
Yes, actually, that's...
It always, yeah, it's a late start.
7:30.
Yes, that's what I have to, actually, 7:30. As I mentioned briefly before, I was with the League's Education Committee last week and had a great discussion with them, gave them kind of the high levels on where we are with budgets, where the middle school project is, took some great ideas and feedback that I'm sharing with the building committee on that. And as I mentioned, they thanked us for our, all of our collaborative efforts, which is nice. I think that's it for me. Liaison standpoint, what other liaison reports?
Just by way of community reports, a few of us, I know you've all was there, went to the MLK Observance, Lori was there. And not surprisingly, the Metco leadership put together a tremendous program with the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council. It was really a moving evening, it was very, very well done. One of the centerpieces was the music performed by both the community and student groups. And then there was a wonderful telling of the Metco story that was very, very well done. And it was televised.
It was actually extremely well attended and very diverse. It actually was very, it was a very good meeting.
That's great. Other liaison reports?
Just the, the policy subcommittee met this week, discussed the two new policies that we want to introduce. We're still checking a few things, the legal, the discussion continuing next, and then there are other things that will come to committee.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead. You ready?
Yes. Concord, Concord Carlisle CPAC has a next board meeting coming up. It's scheduled for this Thursday, January 30th, at 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. at Ripley Conference Room Number 4. Just wanted to let everyone know that at this meeting, parents can provide input and at a very critical stage of planning process on Concord Middle School project. The CPAC's parent advisory group would like parents to join them so they can learn about the new middle school. This is an opportunity to provide input what special education students need. And if parents have questions, those questions will be answered by, I guess, the organization is CPAC. Architects, project managers will be present. And Superintendent and Director of Special Services will be present also to hear from parents of special needs students. January 16th, CPAC hosts a presentation on special education mediation and facilitated team meetings. This was to help parents understand requests and prepared mediation. This event was, this presentation was very well attended, about 20 parents were in attendance, a few of them were out of district. Next presentation coming up is Basic Rap Rights Understanding IEP Workshop, which will be held February 11th, 7 to 9 at Salisbury Senior Center, presented by Federation of Children with Special Needs. Thank you.
Great, lots of great work going on there. Terrific. Cindy, you had some updates?
Just FinCon, they met last Thursday, they went through the warrant, and just recognized the superintendent would be coming in on the 13th of February. They also had some questions around the building committee project, and they were going to reach out to Mr. Holt and maybe a couple of other members of the, just in terms of finances, the finance subcommittee of the building committee. And they also had questions about the electric bus warrant articles, and I think they'll be reaching out to Mr. Foltz, sponsor of those articles, to perhaps come in on the same night as the schools.
Oh, asked if Mr. Foltz could come into the finance committee meeting on the same night that we're there, which is February 13th. Okay. Duly noted. Wonderful. Great, thanks for bringing that back. And was there anything from the select board?
Oh, they discussed transportation, but that was at the prior meeting, probably? No, I guess it's the most recent meeting, so setting the transportation committee. That, there seems to be some synergy amongst the fact that they were planning to ask the superintendent to be a member or a designated. And I just was thinking, looking at the charge, and they didn't really discuss electrification of the fleet, but I think clearly that should be a part of that if it's more of a standing committee. And, you know, we'll talk about transportation in a little while, but...
Right. Yeah, no, that's good to know, because as we've been talking about a potential standing committee, we want it to be all in sync, so.
And they are still deliberating on that and will not bring it up again until in February because they have a full budget in their next meeting.
Okay. Great, thank you. Good to know. Any other, David, no, updates? Okay, I think we're good on that then. Correspondence, there was just one, this is a fun one to share, that the, now, of course my, now I lost it on my screen. Here we go. Last time, for the Concord group at least, we heard from the Concord Association of Music Parents, Concord AM. And since then, only a couple of days after that, they found out that they will be presented with the 2020 Advocacy Award at the annual MMEA All-State Conference on Friday, March 6th, following their big meeting. So this is a presentation of a prestigious award recognizing the extraordinary, extraordinary work that this organization has done in such a short period of time. So, yeah, it's terrific. It's just great to share it. You know, we heard this only a couple of days after we heard about what they were doing, so it's really nice to hear that it's being recognized so broadly. So just wanted to share that with everyone.
I had one more that we neglected to bring up earlier in January on the mentor program. You'll remember John Fawcett was here, I don't remember when he came and spoke on the program, and Steve, Steve Wells.
Yes, yes.
So what we heard from John, he'd been looking to sort of pass the baton, and we heard that he has found a successor. So that's great news for the program. I think we all were concerned, nobody could fill those big shoes. So Gavin Morrissey's agreed, he's a parent of two high school girls and is looking forward to jumping into that community outreach portion of the project, so we're glad to have succession plans in place and sustainable mentorships available for our kids, so.
That's great.
Yeah, we thank Mr. Morrissey for his willingness...
Many things to both of them, yes, that's terrific.
Superintendent, it's reported.
Sure, great. And I'll, I'll stay high level because some of this will overlap with the update on my goals that's coming up later in the agenda. I did want to report back, I did talk with Challenge Success in the late days of December as to some of the ways in which they conduct evaluation. It was a really intriguing conversation because what I learned from them is that there's still much in that discussion process. Some of their internal debates right now are whether they're a product or a process, which I found really intriguing, and that they don't look to compare schools to one another, they really look for growth within the community the school resides. What I heard were a lot of qualitative outcomes at this point. They do survey kids and we certainly participated in some of that, and they look for changes in data. But it reminded me in what I was listening to, some of what we heard from the facilitator when we did the strategic planning was early signs of evidence, and I heard a lot of that in what she described to me. They look for change in the way we interact with one another and the behaviors we see in kids and the way we structure classrooms and set forth pedagogy and instruction. So she reminded me of their framework, which is about the schedule, so it's an acronym, Space Framework, it's linked to my report so that you can look it up. And really, the things they ask schools to focus on is, are related to schedules, project and problem-based learning, alternative and authentic assessment, a climate of care and education for the whole community. They do have strands for parents and they do have strands for community, and we continue to try to ebb and flow between those two. And so we talked quite a bit about outreach and messaging and some of really making sure, starting with the parent community, that they really understand what we're doing, branding and things like that. So I left with a lot of validation, a lot of potential resources as well. She encouraged us to stay in touch, they're really intrigued with the work we've been doing here because we've been involved for a number of years. And as they really try to get their assessment and evaluation structures in place, they'd love to get our feedback on those. So, it was a great conversation. In terms of educator evaluation, we're in the midpoint of the year and really focused on formative assessments. I've really had, really had outstanding meetings with all of the evaluators over the course of late December and early January. Kristin Herbert and I traveled to school and met with all of them, whether it be the assistant principals and principals or the department chairs at the high school. And really, I felt like we were modeling the professional dialogues, we're hoping they're going to go back in half with teachers. So really rich, robust conversations about, more about teaching and learning than the evaluation process itself, which I think is actually how we make progress, so. Innovative pedagogy, I've attached for you all of the summaries of the ninth grade academy planning, which is really coming together and I think a pretty impressive set of work across every aspect of the high school who committed to this process and the teachers that are willing to participate and really create more of a team-based approach for our ninth grade students. We are taking that messaging on the road to Carlisle tomorrow night and then here at CCHS next week. So hopefully all the eighth grade families will come out and learn and listen and ask questions and feel like we've really created a different plan. It's going to feel a little more middle school-ish than high school-ish, and that's by design, so hopefully that'll be what resonates with families and kids as they, as they make that transition. Inclusion and cultural competency, I'll have to start by saying we had our first pre-K to 12 day of professional development paths. You'll remember this vision got snowed out in December, so we had to wait another month. As I walked place to place, and I certainly didn't get to all the sessions, it, it was just outstanding and exceptional. A combination of many of our own educators leading their peers, some outside folks, and then this great richness of having preschool with high school and everybody mixed together. And what I felt like I saw were the threads of the strategic plan through all of this being taught and listened to and learned, and that's how we actually make, make things happen is when it's at the level of the educators. So it was, it was a really great afternoon. We also met with the cultural competency committee, highly focused this past session on diverse hiring and recruitment and retention, and really talked a lot on the retention components of hiring diverse staff. We continue to review our special education and student support services. I did want to let you know that we are partly into the tiered focus monitoring process. This is the six-year cycle that DESI requires all districts participate in. They rename it every so often, so it doesn't, it used to be the coordinated program review. So we are doing the self-assessment now and submitting that to the state. Ruth Grooby's obviously leading much of it, Kristin Herbert leads the other half, and we do civil rights and the L L, Title I, so. School safety, we're making progress with getting badges out to all staff and no building habits. We are building a robust walkie-talkie system and looking to pilot the Crisis Go app, which will allow us instantaneous communication. Sustainability, you heard from others out front, I met with them, I'm connecting closely with all of the other groups in town. We co-sponsored tonight's event that is unfortunately held while we're here at Willard to host Roshini of the Sunrise Movement. We did create a sustainable webpage to try to track all of our work, so you can see that under my section of the webpage, and I really house all the, all the happenings. Community and collaboration, this list is really robust right about this time of year. Continual conversations with the League of Women Voters, I am speaking at the Concord Rotary at the end of the month, we're meeting with CPAC next week, the sustainability groups reaching out and connecting with all of them. As you mentioned, the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council co-led the Metco program. Pets and People left this room and is actively bringing therapy dogs to both the middle and high school regularly. And I just wanted to give a plug finally to the Middle School Musical, which is slated for the 31st of January through February 2nd. They are performing Mary Poppins this year, so it should be exceptional.
It's very early.
It is early, they've changed the timing, intentionally changed the timing.
It's very popping, it depends on the winds.
Yes. I think what was exciting was the middle school's thoughtfulness to make this a more community-based event and engage the kids. So the sixth graders will have an in-school performance of the show for them, and Thoreau's sending their fifth graders over, and we've invited all of Ripley and the bus drivers and just trying to really read our own school community as well. So, busy but exciting.
That's great.
Yeah.
Wow, there's a lot going on there.
There's a lot going on. A lot of great things going on, yeah.
Great, so, transportation report.
So just a little, some context to what this is and why. Back in December, as Linda mentioned, mothers out front and Brian Foltz is here, so Brian, please engage with us through this conversation, really reached out to ask us to consider our electric bus fleet and how we might go forward. What we thought was important was to do a State of the Union and give you some history on the bus fleet and how we got where we are. And then I think the ultimate goal is to collaborate with the community. And we can talk on the Warren article pieces, but ultimately a master plan needs to get, to get developed. And that's also has to be collaborative with the community, especially CMLP. But we thought it important that the history and our story gets shared, both not just with the committee itself, with the community at large. So Jared's going to take you back through the stages of how we got where we are.
Great.
Just one thing if I may. Other than seasonal adjustments, I think we may have found a new template for Concord presentations.
I did find that.
Well done.
Let's just see my question mark again. So thank you. So back on December 18th, I actually missed the school committee meeting. But I was asked to sort of come up with the history of our fleet. So I was able to find quite a bit of information over the last month dating back to really 2010. I think from 2010 to today, we can really tell our story a little bit. So I'm going to hit you with some information and hopefully I can answer most of your questions and then at the end, ask away. So starting with Concord Carlisle. So Concord Carlisle has 20 buses currently, ages 2006 to 2020. We have two types of engines, a rear and a front. The rear ones are now becoming more popular and we're starting to buy more of those. All types of mileage and wear and tear. Our capacities for children range from 83 to 75 to 83 or 50 to 55 adults, except for the regions one wheelchair, which holds 67 kids and 44 adults. And then I'll go into later tonight, we pending legal, it's really a legal formality tonight. We have three other buses that are going to come in line. Concord Public Schools has 22 buses ranging from 2007s to 2020s, again with various amounts of mileage and wear and tear. The capacities of our bus ranges also from 75 to 83 or 50 to 55 adults. And we also have both rear and front, front-end engines. You can see in bold, we have our one electric bus. I have some more history on that coming, but that, we got that in 2016. And as of right now, it's important to note, we have four buses that are being leased. And that doesn't include the two that we're asking for tonight. If they're back up at the high school, we currently have nine buses being leased. And that does not include the three buses that were asked for tonight. So Concord E-Lion Electric Bus. So it was grant-funded through the Department of Energy Resources, or the DOE R. We were one of three districts to be awarded a bus, ourselves, Cambridge and Amherst. It's being recognized as the nation's first full-size all-electric school bus in the country with a wheelchair lift. The capacity is 66, three per seat, not including the wheelchair. The first in-service day was November 9th, 2016. And we've had, we had mechanical issues really from that day all the way through 2017 until September 2018. The E-Lion staff came, or the Lion staff came down from Canada to take a look at it on site. They were unable to fix it on site. So then we had to ship it to Canada in October of 2018. It's important to note they now have a New York facility, so we don't have to send it all the way up there. And then the bus returned to us in spring of 2019. It has been in operation since with no major issues. It travels about 63 miles a day and it gets about 70 miles on a full, a full daddy charge. I wanted to highlight this because of our amazing mechanics. The Cambridge Public Schools, as I mentioned, got one of, one of the three buses. We have been maintaining that electric bus from the beginning. And I just thought that was really important to note. We have a history of the hours spent on it and everything. And we'll be building the Cambridge Public Schools for that. I wanted to give a really nice shout out to our mechanics.
That's great.
So.
So ours, we actually maintained Cambridge and Amherst. So our was the only one that had mechanical issues in this scope?
Well, I, well, I assume Cambridge because we've been really working on it. I didn't get that far into looking into Amherst as well as Cambridge's, but I know that ours had some serious mechanical issues.
We were told all, all three communities had issues. And Lion took back the Amherst bus and the Concord bus to do the full rework. And both have been working well since then. But yes, all this was, as the former town manager put it, a bleeding-ish pilot. We went into it eyes wide open to that aspect and it, we worked through those issues.
The price of the novelty of being the first in the region.
And through it, or maybe they would have anyway, but basically our technicians have become so well-versed in an electric bus that Cambridge is sending their bus to us for maintenance. That's very impressive.
Yes. So just a little history of the number of buses in the fleet. In 2010, we had 34, 14 of them at the region and 20 at CPS. We are now up to 42, 20 at the region and 22 at CPS. In 2000, between 2017, 2018, we added five. And that was due to the new start time at the high school. So here is our average age. At 2010, it was about three. And then it peaked up to eight in 2015. And I'll explain that, the reason for that in the next slide. But we're right, sort of at the sweet spot, I'd say right now, five years. I'd say that is where I'm comfortable at, the average age being five years. And replacing between four and five buses each year. And that will keep us on that, between the two numbers.
And Jared, the lifespan of a bus is approximately?
Eight to 10.
Until it does.
Close to 10. But it all depends on the route, the wear and tear, et cetera.
I don't know if you have this information, it'd be interesting to know. We have three years that we had an average of five years, another three years of six. It'd be extremely interesting to know if in 2015, when we had much older buses, we had more mechanical problems.
Yes.
I remember, we did.
Okay, that's an important piece of information.
Pretty breakdowns.
When you come to evaluate this, there's some kind of a.
Still happening when I go here. And that was another driver for people, driver, for people driving to school.
Right.
No, I mean, coming to say why we buy new ones, there's a missing slide.
Four years while we were trying to figure out where we're going to house the department. The district did not purchase any new buses between 2012 and 2015. So the reason for a lot of mechanical issues over those four years. In 2016, we bought 10, 10 new buses. Continued that in 17, got four more. And then in 18, with the change in start times, we bought nine. Seven of those were at the region. Five of those were, two only, five of the seven were, were new. Two were replacements. And then four last year, and then this year will be five.
So I think you said this, maybe it belongs to the, when we come to approve the financing, but, and I didn't check it, so I don't, it just, literally I remember, is it possible when you spoke about budgets, you had in both Concord and region, you had only two for each?
Uh, two, for 21.
It's an estimation.
So I'm talking really this year.
All right.
Next year is this year.
Sorry.
It's going to happen a lot, eleven fiscal years in play.
As long as it doesn't happen to you, only to me, it's okay.
The purpose of this slide is I just wanted to show you our trade history from 2016. We're getting on money's way. You can see a lot of mileage on there. The ones that have the lower mileage, just a lot of wear and tear. They released, you know, nine, a couple of them were outliers, but we're getting, we're getting on money's way from a lot of this.
216, that's impressive.
Okay. So we're currently still in round one of the BW settlement grid. So for round one, we put in for one bus. The way that it worked is they asked us during the application process to get a quote from, from a company that has an electric bus. We were quoted by Bluebird. The cost of that was $364,971. The charging station was $3,786. The amount that we are going to receive, that they did award us, is $295,000. What that represents is that represents 80% of the cost of one bus. So therefore, Concord's portion is $73,751 for that one bus. We do know that we can lease this, so that is good. We can spread that out over a few years. But that is our, our obligation for one electric bus.
So we purchased the bus, but we do the financing only on our part.
Correct. And most likely, this is going to happen in 2021, this summer. But we're still waiting to hear. I've been working with Kate Hanley and she's been trying to ask and we just have no room for information right now. So what's next? Next is we're going to continue to work on round one, get this first electric bus in. Wait, hopefully there'll be another round two of the VW grant settlement. We need to estimate what the cost of one electric bus versus two electric buses will be. It's not as straight as a $73,000 per bus. Because the way that it works is they will give you 80% of one bus or $500,000 for two buses. So if we did the $5,000 for two buses, the, the price would be.
About a hundred thousand.
Was that?
About a hundred thousand per bus.
It would be, it would be more than that. Correct. Correct. It would be about 200, so the, the price for two buses is about $737,000. They would pay 500 of that, so our obligation for two will be $237,000. We're going to continue to look into all other electric bus grants and opportunities. We're going to continue these conversations with the CNLP and with the cost implications and any limitations there are to adding this fleet and continuing to build on it. We did call the state. We do know that Chapter 71 reimbursement, which is the reimbursement for the region's transportation, it would be eligible. It would be eligible if we were going to do another region side. And then we need to continue our bus replacement cycle. We don't want to get to the point that our buses can age up to the eight or nine years. And my recommendation would be to continue four to five buses a year until we really figure out what we're going to do in the future. And I think right now leasing is the way to go. The interest rate that you're going to see tonight is 2.52. And with a great rating, I think right now it's a no brainer.
What about operation costs between regular buses and the electric buses?
What are the operating costs?
The difference, is it much cheaper, much more expensive? It's another question when you buy something for 10 years.
Sure. Well, the upfront cost is, you know, 364 versus 140, give or take. You know, it, I don't 100% know, other than, you know, the price of diesel. And, but that's something we got to continue to research on.
Do you have the, the presentation from the Alternative Fuel Committee? So we had, we had done, a lot of the questions you're asking defer back to the original study that kicked off the pilot for the electric bus. Can you hear me?
I'm trying to tell you this. Why don't you, Jonathan?
So a lot of the questions you're asking really back to the original advisory committee that was formed to research different types of drivetrains for these school buses. And in, we did a presentation to the school committee back early 2016. I can, I know it's on your website, but we can get that for you. And it, it looked at the upfront cost versus the maintenance and the infrastructure costs that will go along with these different fuel type vehicles. And the, the end recommendations were primarily to get a wash station to extend the life of our vehicles, because that's generally what kills our vehicles is they fail inspection from rust at the end of their life. The other thing was that we did, you mentioned fuels. We actually had data for over a decade about the price per unit of fuel. And we were able to show that electricity is very budgetable. It's a consistent low price and is, vehicles are cheaper to fuel. The, there's less volatility as well. So you're able to predict what you need to budget for those vehicles easier. Maintenance is, is always been a question mark. And with the pilot, we showed that the maintenance estimates that they were telling us were not true because it was a new vehicle. As these buses get deployed more and more and manufacturers work out the first years bugs with these vehicles, which Lion has done a lot. I mean, that's why when we sent it back, it's come back and really had no major issues.
But now we're looking not at Lions, now we're looking at Bluebird, no?
Yes. So the quote that we had in round one was for Bluebird. I have since learned more information about the bus and have some concerns in researching that to try to get new answers about cold weather and make sure that we don't, we, if, I feel that we're going to go with Bluebird and have a recurrent, the level of issues we had with the first pilot, I won't suggest we go that way, but I don't have specific answers for tonight on that.
So I think we have to remember that on one hand, I think that we all, I believe, we all committed to sustainable solutions, but they have to be practical as well. Because at the end of the day, if we have one out of those buses out of circulation for a year, it puts the whole fleet under much more.
Yes, it does.
Struts.
Right. And, and I understand, I understand that concern. And the experience with the Lion bus, it did have some operational issues, but it did work and it always had a backup because it was one of three wheelchair buses. We meant, you know, we kept that in service. And it, it was more of a hassle than it should have been, but those are kind of the expectations set with being the first in the country to deploy one of these. So it did have backups. But the, any next bus, I wouldn't expect the same level of issues because this marketplace is much more competitive. It's much more, there's a lot of other pilots that have gone on. It's funny that Massachusetts deployed the first electric school bus, but since then California has hundreds. Dominion Energy in Virginia is deploying 50.
There's many.
Yeah, there's many other, including the Midwest of Michigan.
More information now than what's.
A lot more information and a lot of rapid advancements in the technology level. So I don't expect the pilot to repeat, but I will do everything I can to avoid and have it be smooth as possible.
The first recommendation you had at this advisory forum was a wash station?
Yeah, it was, it was wash stations, the roads all depends.
I don't know, I understand, but did it happen? Do we have?
No, this, oh, you can go.
There you go, please.
So the site is, the site that was, in the end selected at WR Grace is a super front, a former super front site. And there are already, that water is already being used to treat a lot of other things. And I don't believe they have the access to do that.
That's a different agenda.
That's a different agenda, I... We're not going to solve that one today.
But I...
I don't know, I've seen such a big question mark, so I had to answer a question.
I would like to, if it'd be all right, you had a slide with the one bus for this, this year, and you talked about the cost?
Yes.
Yes, the seventy-three thousand?
Yep.
Yeah, so back when we applied, we looked at the option to do two buses, and it came to that two hundred and, two hundred and forty thousand roughly. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong, you budgeted about a hundred thousand per bus?
We budget, at least right now, for a lease, I budget just under thirty thousand for a year for the bus. So times three, four. For the CPS this year, I believe it was two, new ones. But I budget, I budget for leases.
About a hundred thousand per bus for diesel?
A little bit more right now, because of the options.
If, if, if you get the grant for two buses, it's the same, it will be on par with the leasing that we're doing now for diesel.
Well, actually, the reason that I brought a town meeting article on funding is that I don't believe it does. So the reason I want to pull up this slide is it says the charging station is thirty-seven hundred dollars. That is because when the depot was being built, I suggested, why don't we put in multiple conduits instead of just enough to do one charger? So we're utilizing that existing infrastructure, and we don't have any trenching for this first bus. When we go to the next school buses, we need to have some kind of plan about how we're going to run power to, from the parking spot to the grid. And that's, that can be quite expensive. And the value that the light plant can see from this bus utilizes bidirectional chargers, which also would be quite expensive, that's why I said up to two hundred thousand dollars for two vehicles. And the other article I have is going to the point of, the schools shouldn't have to do this alone. And the town as a whole needs to understand how, for example, a, a school bus that has vehicle to grid, has, as a, as a, as a, as a person who pays their electric bill and as a person who pays the taxes, making the investment into a bus to do vehicle to grid nets value to the community under a, under a grant, covering a lot of purchase cost. But the individual departments may not. For example, I don't want to see that forty thousand, if, if, I'm using my own numbers, but if, if you're budgeting a hundred thousand for each diesel bus, and we get a grant that can do two, and we have to come up with a hundred and twenty thousand per bus, that means forty thousand has to come from educational programs. And I know that you're under the FinCon guidelines, so the town can earmark in extra forty thousand dollars for you to use for a certain purpose. So I didn't see a mechanism where it could get done in the normal process, that's why I'm going to town meeting to ask for funding, to help make sure that we can maximize the grant funding. And the town citizens, ratepayers and taxpayers can fully experience the value of those two buses with that higher infrastructure investment from CNLP with the vehicle to grid. Is it, I, I think, not only do people not know the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per electric bus versus a hundred thousand for a diesel, which is a very important point, but they also don't understand the cost of a kilowatt hour during our capacity peak. So if Concord Light can pull out a hundred kilowatts out of a bus, I think it's more like fifty, but each one of those kilowatt hours over that one hour each year is worth two hundred dollars. Not the fifteen cents that we pay on our electric bill, two hundred dollars, so. And there's transmission peaks each month that they can also hit, that will reduce ratepayers' expense. But that value, how do we, how does, how does, you know, the, the light plant and the schools work together to figure out how that money flows, so that those budgets that are putting in the money are seeing the benefits come back to them? That's where that second article, where we sit down, led by the department heads, and write a report on how we can get from A to B and do some of these electrification goals. And this turned into a talking about my articles, I apologize if I distracted through the power section, but...
Thanks for your support on these initiatives, it's great.
Question about the timing on the regional buses. I mean, we know we're, what, a year out from being able to get a bus, we put an order in today. So to be able to fold these into the, into the stream of keeping buses up to date, it seemed to me we'd want to be doing that now, even though we're buying these other buses. We'd want to be doing that now, so that we would get that, those two buses in, in a timeframe that would fit for the year that we'd start funding. So we're not in a situation where we've got to buy four buses, because we aren't sure when the electrics are coming in. And I think we also want to make sure we take advantage of that while it's there.
So we...
You volume.
I was going to say, you look confused by what he said. I think it, it's just the concept of syncing up delivery with payment.
I lost, I lost halfway, but I'm not sure, I, I, but I think I get you, I, I usually ask if I want to...
Sorry, go ahead.
It's the timing, is the challenge, because it's a one-year delay from when we order to receive of the bus, and I think Wally's...
Of the electric bus?
Yes, yes. So I think Wally's making a valid point, that I was going to actually suggest you consider is just that timing decision-making. Given that Chapter Seventy-One right now does allow for electric bus purchases, the state's been a little bit intrigued by our phone call. And also, we caught their attention, right? So I think there's a window here now that may close, as they realize that there's nothing prohibiting the high-cost subsidy, and they may tighten that up, although we're getting, there's some level of support happening here too, because we're getting emails back very intrigued. So that said, I think now that we've brought it to their attention that it's something we're considering doing, and they realize that there's no ability to stop it, if they feel like it is exorbitant in cost, that may change, so, that may change. I, I tend to feel like we should consider moving forward on the regional side to get in the queue for two buses down. And I'm picking two partly because I think it's a nice gradual ability to transition. It requires the infrastructure upgrades Brian's Warren article starts to address that haven't taken place. Like, it feels safe enough that we could, could benefit from the aid without either looking greedy about it or counting on infrastructure, we don't actually have funds to do, you know, it just feels like a middle ground. But I do think you want to consider telling us to pursue that sooner than later. Just because a lot of things could change, and then that...
To pursue what?
Going forward with two electric buses at the region, because Chapter Seventy-One will subsidize, what's the rate right now? Percentage? Seventy-five percent of the bus.
I think it's a, it's a no brainer, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer, I think that we should...
Till they shut the door.
Yeah, well, we can, we should absolutely take advantage of it.
I think that our whole quest is about trying to move forward with all kinds of solutions that are, I think it's a no-brainer. I think that's, I don't know if anybody thinks differently, but I think that it can come.
Two, two additional electric buses in a fleet of forty-two isn't going to derail any subsequent planning at all?
No.
Especially if they work.
But if you total that up, it would take, we have one on the road now, we know we have one already coming. There's a VW, a second round of VW money, which, if all goes well, we could stretch to another two, plus the two at the... It starts to add up to a bigger percentage of...
Be six buses in thirteen months.
Yeah.
And then there's, like, in other things, another decision we took lately, the fact that we move forward with it now doesn't mean that if we see that there is some data that conflicts, we cannot stop the process. So I think we should move as fast as possible to take advantage of all this, and then we'll have more data.
Can I ask a quick question first, sorry?
All right, Brian.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, building on, on that idea. Yes, so the Volkswagen money has been used with three of the region's transit agencies to do large adoptions of electric vehicles, electric buses. With our pattern of trying to buy one or two, it's, it's all about trying to work within the existing system. I think if we were to go to NASTEP and say, we're going to continue to do each round with two buses, because we're trying to build up our fleet, can we just, you know, do a proposal to do a larger purchase and, and move forward, is something I think they would, we've shown we're serious, so I think they would listen.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, we should lobby for a bigger picture way to do it.
But, but Rem, I, I just, I...
There's deficiencies.
I told you before, and I'd like Jerry to correct me if I'm wrong, but I, there is a piece of information that you used that I'm not too sure that we shouldn't try and adjust.
Sure.
You, you, the way you presented is that a bus, a diesel bus, costs about a third or less than a second. And I actually think it's half, if I understand, whether, a diesel bus is about a hundred and seventy?
Yeah, anywhere from ninety to about a hundred and thirty-two right now, with all the options. The options that we're getting, that we need is about a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Is that, are those options like the camera system, the radio system?
It's a big one, yeah.
So those are, those camera systems and radio systems are also additional to this price?
Right.
So this price goes up, this three hundred and sixty-five?
By more than twenty, thirty, maybe.
Yeah, so that's why I've been using that hundred thousand for...
Because I actually had a feeling that we speak about a hundred and seventy.
I haven't seen it that high.
No, that's, that's what I meant, so I, I...
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear with this committee that I don't feel Concord should spend three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars on electric buses out of our own. It's all about leveraging the outside funds that could help us move forward.
No, we do a little further, I just wanted to ask one quick follow-up question to Wally's point about syncing up the timing. If we start to move forward on this now, are we imagining, let's say, and we think it's a year-long lead time, are we imagining those two potential electric buses in the regional area to hit in the twenty-two budget then? So then next year, we can know where we are and plan for them in FY twenty-two budget?
And it, because it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement, it won't be dramatic to me.
It won't be dramatic, right, but just to know where to put them.
We're managing the active reliable fleet, which will be able to plan a year out.
Which will be part of it, okay, good, I just wanted to make sure I understood the timing.
One of the things I'm trying to get clarity on too, just so you know, Kate Hanley was going to come tonight, she couldn't attend. If the region is eligible for the BW grant, it's really the municipalities right now, and it being a region, it's a little, it's not as straightforward, so I need to look into that. But for the, the region, right now, you buy a bus, four hundred thousand, and you put in for, and we lease it, and we get, we would get Chapter Seventy-One reimbursement for the five years that we lease. So if you buy it, you only get seventy-five percent one time, so it's good to spread it out.
Can you, you only get seventy-five percent on that one bus, one time?
Or however many buses that we buy, technically, at the region side.
At the region.
There is no limit to the reimbursement from the state right now on Chapter Seventy-One on buses for regions.
Is it only for region or to towns as well?
Uh, just for regions.
So, and you know, a little clarification here. To region, you, seventy-five percent of every dollar you spend on transportation is reimbursed roughly, right? So it doesn't matter, electric, non-electric, bicycle, whatever, okay. So that would be like your lease cost or your purchase cost, right? I'm not trying to understand your restriction.
So the, the way, yeah, if we, I just look at it as, I would rather spread it out over to offset, say, assessments that we do on Chapter Seventy-One, we offset, instead of, if we got it for one year and we got three hundred thousand, we would have that as revenue for one year, but if we didn't get anything that next year, we would have...
Lots, but if you leased it, wouldn't you get the lease cost reimbursed?
Correct.
Okay, so that's just the lease versus buy. So then, the other, I have a couple of different questions, so I won't, another one is, is the VW money at state money, that's some big settlement between VW and...
Fourteen point seven, yes.
But that's at the state level, or what?
Is it federal or state?
Uh, they say it's being distributed by the state.
And how does it find its way to this, as compared with something else?
So, well, there was, there was the lawsuit, the settlement, and in that there was mitigation actions that can be taken. And there's eight categories, all the way from hub boat, you know, replacement and so forth. And then that goes, those guidelines go to each state, and then each state can make their own guidelines that are more restrictive, which Massachusetts did with the cap and with some other things. And then those programs are pushed out to communities.
Okay, so that's in addition, how would that, so that presently would be a Concord-only or a Carlo, it would be a town-specific?
Correct.
So you could do both, right? You could buy the town buses for, on that money, and you could spend the state's money, except then the window eventually closes in the state, right?
We, we expect it.
Okay, well, you might as well go in the window, I agree. So then my last question is, and maybe it's a Brian question.
Sure.
Given the history of the first bus, the E-Lion, do you want to try to pick a reliable brand and make your fleet that brand? Or is it too difficult to do that?
It's, it's too early to do that. The, so, electric buses, Lyon was the first in North America with a school bus, but there are many other transit, transit electric buses are all around the globe, there's cities with full electric fleets. I very much like the Thomas product, but it is a Type C with a nose, it has a different passenger capacity. What we really liked about the Bluebird that we got the quote on is that it is a Type D, the transit style. Which one should be the future fleet, that is, that's, we, we're not there yet.
But for the four, six, eight, however many you're thinking of, are you...
We're waiting for Brian to continue to guide us, we've been looking at Bluebird, he's checking on some concerns that came up, especially about cold weather. So we're slowing down enough to do our work.
But at the end of the day, the decision about which one is premature, we first have to get the grants.
Well, that's the thing, so, yeah, I'm, I'm holding up the work process on this first round grant, because I had this concern about the chemistry and the battery of the Bluebird. And once I get clarification on that, they're free to, to order a single electric bus, whether it be that manufacturer or another. Do you mind if I ask one quick question? It's about strategies, we've talked about this before, what's your strategy for making sure we have buses to decondition? Because David has brought up Volkswagen Lyon.
Right, I'm actually not really, we don't get much to trade in. So we might not even trade in more than one of the five ones that were, that were asking for tonight. So there's a number of things we can do. One, we can sit on them, we just might run out of some room, because we have limited parking spots. We can, we can go ahead and, and look into, say, military transportation, or DBUS, and whatever buses they have, we can maybe buy one off them to qualify for this grant, for, for little money. So there are a number of options, but right now, we're not trading in many. We have four or five plus that, you know, to, but the, the thing is, it has to be running. To be, to, to trade this into this grant, it has to be a working bus, it has to be, so.
Oh, you have good mechanics, you'll get it to run for the orders.
Get it down at Concord Center, might not get back.
So the regional piece, which to me is the one that's more time-sensitive. We're, we're going to vote tonight on three diesel buses. It would seem to me that we should commit to two electric buses now, and somehow commit to those with a, some sort of payment. So we don't get into a situation a year from now, and the bus is on its way to us, and the window's closed retroactively.
I wonder how early I can get the encumbrance in for, for our, ours to allow us for a two thousand twenty-one purchase. If we can commit the funds now, say it's going to come in the fall, stretching it a little bit. But in early winter, then maybe they'll allow us to do that.
So they're using that pretty much.
Yeah, that would be good to come back to us with soon, so we can make that, because I, it sounds to me like we're all willing to, to, to do that, and, you know, I do think that the window's not going to be open forever.
And just to clarify, and I will clarify this more when we get to that section, but the vote tonight is just for the spending, we already fought them, it's the leasing costs.
Funding.
Funding, okay. So there's nothing to do with new buses.
Right, and it doesn't replace any of this plan or anything like that.
So it has to come as an action item to next, you know?
It depends on how much we can learn, when they're ready, bring it. This is what I would think, right? Uh, it depends on how much we can learn. When they're ready, bring it. Um, is what I would think. Um, question, one of the things that I've heard as we've talked about this, there's a limit to what the current grid connection at the depot can handle. And at some point, we would need to run more line, um, which is non-trivial. Um, how many buses, how many charging stations can we handle, uh, with the current configuration? Do you know?
So the depot has four tubes upon it. Uh, I know you have to put a data line through one of them. Um, so I, two to three chargers could go there. Uh, the, the, the good thing is, is that that solar array that's right next to the depot has a direct connection to the substation. And so dropping a, a second service line there, just like for the building for the depot, uh, I don't think would be that difficult. Uh, but that's, again, going back to the department heads coming together, writing a report, working in partnership to envision what, not just the school bus fleet, but what all the fleet will look like. And then what kind of infrastructure needs to go in will allow the town to, to forecast some of those costs that are, uh, Concord Light is doing this with multifamily dwellings, uh, where they have a pilot, where they're going to work with three communities in Concord to put this infrastructure in, but they're doing different configurations. So they can learn to do those cost estimates and, uh, and, and do the next projects better. And those, that kind of learning is, is ongoing. So I don't have an answer for forecasting what that could cost. Uh, but the, the, the work needs to be done in that report. And if that's the point of, of it, is to answer those kind of questions.
As you get to multiple buses, is there a point where you can use, I mean, if you've got two buses, you probably need two chargers. But if you've got six buses, can you keep the fleet charged with four?
You could. Uh, I, I would, I would prefer to see us do a charger per bus. The reason being that in order to get the vehicle, the grid value out of it, you want to have a large enough connection for all those buses to push backwards onto the grid and, uh, and lower our peak at the substation. So preferably, uh, if you want to have a charger per bus.
And there's nothing that requires that charger necessarily to be at the depot?
No. Uh, it, it's.
You want to take it home?
Just take it to your house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So vehicle to grid is done with some Hondas and some, um, some BMWs. And they, they do it as grid control. I, I'm going to distract the conversation by going to the depot. Yes, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be at the depot. The depot is uniquely positioned because it has such a large fleet and it has such a direct connection to the substation that it's a, it's a really good first one.
Yeah. Great. Thank you for all your work on this. We're lucky to have you.
Yes, thank you.
It's interesting.
It is.
And Jared, thanks for pulling this all together. This is really helpful to give us a big picture of where we stand.
And I sent you the presentation from 2060. If you can just confirm that I sent you the correct one. I found it.
The.
Alternative Fields.
Yes.
So I sent you the one I think it is.
Cynthia's multitasking always.
She already sent it to you.
Okay.
Jared, Jared, one, I thought about this. While, while it's still relatively fresh, it might be good if we could capture the difference in fleet mileage, uh, with the depot versus when we had buses in Belreka and Acton. Um, because of, there's mileage savings there and it would be good to be able to equate that to a dollar figure because we do, you know, we spent a lot of money on the depot. I think it would be good for the town.
Plus they're better maintained.
That we have better maintenance, which is harder to quantify. But the mileage is an easy number to get at. We just, if time passes, well, it'll be harder again.
Okay, yeah, I get that.
Excellent. Okay, anything else on that? All set? Done with that?
Moving on.
Great.
Um, okay. It's for none of goals.
Yeah, about goals now.
Erin, if you don't mind scrolling for me, as I said, I'd appreciate it. So, and I don't want to spend too, too long on this, but I had a lot of information. So we're, we're happy to take this in as much depth or higher level as you would like. Um, what I tried to do was provide at least some benchmarking as to the work we've done so far this year. I didn't go to that next level of giving you dates and things like that as to when things happened. I could, but I haven't had the feeling the committee wanted that before. So we'll, we'll start here and then you can give me that feedback. So I'll talk at, at a high level and then to dialogue, obviously, and we can talk on questions as we go. Um, so my first goal was around providing targeted instruction to students to close gaps and address needs. This really encompassed both RTI and special education. Um, we have a very robust sixth grade RTI system in place now. The schedule allows for true RTI block. Um, CCHS has also created, um, formal RTI blocks in English and math. I'm working with Cameron on developing a schedule and options for the seventh and eighth grade. Um, it, I heard a lot of the desire for that from the staff last week as we were talking about the new school. Um, we've been using data to drive our focus on writing in K through five. So we've, um, you'll remember that's in their school improvement plans and it's been really fun to walk buildings and see us reinvigorate our writing program through Lucy Cawkins' model. Um, we continue to review and modify service delivery to the buildings where we made the most changes. That would be the middle and high schools and looking at what's been effective, we've adjusted along the way for sure. Uh, discussing formative needs and the specialized programs, um, and that includes everything from launch all the way down to the intensive programs at Thoreau. Um, continuing to watch the enrollment in those programs, um, for trends, patterns. Uh, still looking for, to identify which students those in-house programs can service, who's still going out of district, um, things like that. Uh, contracted services, you heard mentioned in Jared's report. Ruth's been really diving in deep to looking at where those monies have been going and what we now have capacity for within the districts. Targeted training, language-based needs is a continual discussion across all levels and making sure we're, um, we have the professional capacity to service kids, um, with those kinds of, those kinds of gaps. And then more training also in terms of inclusion and any specific areas need. I'm starting to hear, and I think it's really great feedback, coming from different settings, but it's the same tone of the regular educators are needing more training too. And we need to identify what that looks like and what that plan needs to be and make sure we're actualizing that for the coming, coming school year. The next goal, um, is about the evaluation system. Uh, so update you. We've talked on some specifics recently, but just high-level view. Um, we've been looking at all the benchmark points and the timelines, spending that with the administrators and doing work with the staff. Um, we've had a common set of slides we shared at every staff meeting to get the process started this year. Um, we're meeting currently with the CCTA to look at the evaluation language in the contract, which is what we did with CTA a year ago, meeting with all evaluators, like I discussed. Um, formative assessments across the schools, those are due coming up into February and March. So Kristin and I will be reading those for consistency and whether we're making gains in that common structure and messaging. Uh, we're going to be using Desi's collaboration calibration model with the evaluators at the leadership team level. There's all sorts of free resources. Desi continues to put out, you know, videotapes of teachers that the group can watch together and then process the feedback so that we can continue to get more synced up. And then try to model the process with the administrators with their goals and their formative stats mid-year. Um, that'll be upcoming in the next month. Creating a learning environment that offers new approaches and our student-centered, active and engaging. Um, it really, really beefed up what I put into the weekly Sunday email I sent to the staff. Um, it comes with highlights of what's going on in district, sharing of best practice and innovative ideas. When those come along with permission, I ask teachers if I can share what they did with the rest of the, um, K, pre-K twelve staff. Um, there's always an article that touches on one of our threads of the strategic plan. Yesterday's was a twofer because I had both cultural competency and, um, social emotional learning and how those two cross, cross paths. So we really tried to continue to push things out. We've been working with local experts. Uh, Harvard's John Meadows here to meet with a small group of leaders this summer on their new, their new text, um, based on research in deeper learning, um, sharing out some of what I've been familiar with in my other roles as high-tech high and those real exemplars of what, um, real pure innovation, student-centered, project-based learning looks like. Innovative, innovative lessons, like I said, I've been sharing, um, as I spotted in the classrooms as I walk, which I've been doing regularly with the building principals, really reflecting on what that looks like and how we can share among each other. There's so many strong seeds, um, to build off of that some of it's just communication. Uh, Rivers and Revolutions, really trying to maximize that resource. All grade five, as you know, is, is working with Rivers this year. They're about to start their second round. Um, I've already asked Michael to bring you a summer summary at the end of the year with some fifth graders and some high school kids. So we're planning on that. We're in a discussion of a Rivers-like program that will go in as probably a CEF grant um, at the middle school. I can't underestimate the power of my messaging just to say to people, try new things. That's what we want you doing. Take the risk. It's okay if it doesn't work. And I'm actually hearing from the evaluators, sometimes they're getting invited in for observations because they're going to try new things. And I think that is maximizing both of those components, that the evaluation process is being used as a, a feedback loop for, like, this is what I wanted to try. Come, come watch me experiment.
Wow.
Because that expresses obviously some safety in that process as well. Um, and then the CMS visioning work, which we kicked off last week. We're going to leave that work and have a robust professional development plan to build over the next three years to make sure that we're maximizing the space that that building affords us and have a common vision and, um, know what we want teaching and learning to look like. Budget, uh, you were part of this directly, so we'll, um, skip through some of the pieces here. But we obviously brought budgets in that were really sound and at minimum level service while we came in, um, below the Concord Finance Committee's guideline for the high school, which Carlisle then matched, um, and are now not far off of the guideline for CPS. And if we total them together, we're still just a shade below. We continue to reallocate resources, um, in special ed, specialists. Um, I don't want you to think the budget sits in between cycles because it just doesn't. Jared does the living, breathing part of the numbers, but there's a living, breathing part of how the money's spent too. And when we get a, get an idea, we, um, try to find the money from another place that we've either decided we could do differently or maybe isn't needed. And I think we continue to build a collaboration and communication with both finance committees. Um, I think we're feeling some positive feedback from them. Always more to do and more to grow, but it's been a good positive cycle so far. Um, this next one then is the healthy learning environment, which has combination of both student wellness and the safety and sustainability of the school environment itself. Ninth grade academy is a huge portion of that. I've been directly involved in meeting with department, departments and talking on what it looks like and why we're talking about it, right on to just supporting Mike and Kristin and the team that's helped to get the logistics together. Um, I think we've tried to really name our concerns for student wellness in a more explicit way this year, um, whether it be newsletters, meetings, referencing challenge success, which I want to do in a broader way and really flesh out. Um, I think supporting true monthly homework-free weekends. We've really, I think, built that into our routines at the middle and high school in a way that are, uh, I think we're doing them with more fidelity than we were. So I'm glad that we've been able to support that. The therapy dog is another example. Connections between student engagement and wellness. And I think this is a piece that's still in its infancy. We've been trying to stress it, uh, I think at least as we promote the innovation. Um, the more engaged kids are, the less stressed they are. And we need to see how those pedagogy and mental health pieces balance one another. So we're putting those kinds of seeds out. I actively participate in Kristin's social emotional learning committee across the districts. Um, we've been directly working as a leadership team with the consultant that's leading us. Um, so she's been to three different meetings now and will come back again in March. We have climate surveys going out next month, uh, to parents, students and staff so we can triangulate, um, growth or areas of need across those three groups of stakeholders. Um, we're continuing to review the success and challenges of the reconfiguration of CMS, far more successes than challenges. Um, safety efforts, which I mentioned tonight, and then of course the sustainability efforts, which I also mentioned tonight. So, um, that's a big list, but a lot of great things for kids and others in that list. That is, that is a joint, all of these are joint efforts. You know that, but that one especially. Cultural proficiency and inclusivity. I do sit with, uh, on the cultural competency committee. We've met twice so far. We're actively looking to retain and hire more diverse staff. We go to the, uh, hiring fair in March. We're having a pretty thorough discussion of what affinity groups need to look like back here. Um, now that we're better understanding the challenges of being a diverse staff member in a pretty homogenous setting. Um, we have an equity audit, which I've mentioned to you, planned for this spring, where we'll be really gathering feedback. Not unlike the climate, culture audit, but in a very specific way act as to equity across, um, a specific focus on, uh, race in that one. Um, again, I, at the end of my emails to the staff, we present them the upcoming special events out of our culturally competent calendar, our best efforts to be. So staff are aware of dates that are coming up over the coming weeks that might impact students. Um, all the specialized programming, which is growing from the bottom up, which is even more exciting. The playbook initiative coming up at middle school. We have international festivals at, at least four out of the five schools this winter and spring. Um, really good stuff. Uh, my work at MASS S and my mentor group has been highly focused on equity and looking at our Desi data across lines of subgroups and things like that, which has been very eye-opening. The piece that we had already identified and confirmed through that process was needing to really look at the number of, um, students of minority in our AP and honors classes at the high school. So that's become a focus for us this year. Um, in terms of other work in inclusivity, we're communicating regularly with CPAC. Um, we're advocating and looking for funds for the inclusive playground at Thoreau. The capital art, article in Concord will fund a portion of it. The PTG at Thoreau will fund another portion, and we just put in a, um, community chess grant for a third portion in hopes of really doing something more than a little bitty bit at a time. Um, and we're going to have a unified, uh, track, uh, spring group this, this spring, this spring. I can't believe it's going to happen this spring, but the high school really ran with it as we brought it up. Um, so that'll be exciting. There's a team going to be in place. Um, that will lead to probably unified basketball. I learned two weeks ago, there's unified cheerleading. Like my, my visions just got bigger. So, um, and bus buddies, we're expecting to kick up this fall. A little more work to do on that. And then finally, just the partnerships between the schools and communities. Um, it's been incredibly valuable to go to Concord, uh, the townhouse every Monday morning and sit with the department heads across the, across the town. We just are so much more synced up because we sit together weekly. Um, working regularly with all the officials and committees in both towns. Um, I think we're building some nice just ebb and flow. You've heard some of my list of stakeholder groups that I've been meeting with recently. I've been trying to really focus in on the senior citizens. That wasn't my goals this year. And right now I've been doing it where the opportunities are and, um, been to the Thanksgiving lunch. I'll go to the St. Patrick's Day lunch. Um, there's a middle school breakfast right before the break. Uh, and I think this poetry and rhyme, they'll be here in February to share with you. The seniors come into a high school freshman English class and read poetry together. Um, that's been funded through the Carlisle Council on Aging. We're actually putting in for community chess grant to expand that further and, um, build it out more. So it's both Concord and Carlisle collaboratively, but, uh, the seniors have much to offer us and they're a lot of fun to be with and we want to continue to promote that. So. It's been a great start to the year. We're getting, we're doing an awful lot of really good things. Um, really, really good things. And I think you can feel the, the unity of the focus and the mission and the goals all seems to be syncing up, which means it's work from, everybody's on the same page, doing the same work. And that's how it really moves. So it's been great.
Can I just say I'm blown away seeing all of that at once? I mean, that's incredible. It makes me want to say.
I mean, it's a, it's definitely.
It's for Monday. What are you doing Tuesday?
Yeah, right. Um, again, I think, you know, I'm, I'm up here as hands-on in some places, but not by any stretch all of those places. And that's, I think, what happens when you build a common vision. Then we're just sort of steering the direction, which had buy-in and support. And people are now actively bringing ideas to the table and all we do is foster that support. So I'm not going to say I'm not working really hard to do all this. I definitely am. But it's, it's coming from every direction and being well-supported. So.
And you're empowering people to do that.
Yeah, I think that's probably right. You know, telling them to go and get out of the way, right?
Um, I can't help but make. I can't help but make two comments, and I'll make them quick. But one is that it's one thing to create a strategic plan, but it's another to really execute it like this. I mean, this is incredible to see where we were two years ago talking about needing a strategic vision. And this is so much progress on those fronts that we talked about in strategic planning. So it's really exciting. The other one, and again, both of them tie into the history that I have here, but the thing that jumped out at me most in that report is you're telling us that teachers have asked for an evaluator to come in and observe while they try something new for the first time. And that, I mean, not only does it tie into multiple goals, evaluation and new pedagogy, but the fact that you've helped to create an environment of safety and trust like that is just a different place from where we were. And that environment enables so much to happen. So that's, I just want to appreciate that.
Thanks.
Anybody else have, sorry, I jumped in, comments and questions?
I'm glad you did, because I think praise is well-earned, so thank you, Lori. Couple of comments, one in regard to the try new things, just a comment, and that is that I hope that you're helping to establish norms whereby teachers know when a try new things is something that she or he experiments with, with classroom pedagogy, for example. And then there's another order of magnitude where they check with colleagues and discuss first before they make the leap. And further, that there's some feedback loop so that others benefit. And I think that's essential for you to lead the way on that and set the tone for that.
Absolutely.
You mentioned gaps a couple of times. And I'm guessing that in the near future, we're going to hear if any DESI reporting, planning and reporting requirements around gaps are going to call for any changes on our part, on your part. I don't know if we're most of the way there already.
Right, so that comes to us in, I would say, two different streams of information. One is obviously the MCAS and the feedback we get there about where we're doing well and where we have work to do. No doubt, special education is still an area of work to do. The growth rate there is not what it is with the general population, so we've already focused there. Not to the point where in any dire straits in terms of accountability and all of the state's mandates, but for our own level of expectations, we continue to want to work there. In terms of the formal review that is going on now is a document review essentially, and then they come onsite to confirm that. So it's a compliance edit audit of are you following special education law, rules, regulations, all of that. We're going to be really curious to see where we are. I think Bruce Century's given us places we know we have work for growth, especially in getting compliance to look the same across all of the schools. So I think we've identified some of our own areas. It'll be really interesting, and we value the feedback from everyone, state included, to direct us in other directions.
We'll look forward to more, thank you. In terms of retention, we don't speak of staff retention as a general problem, but you're looking at it specifically around perhaps groups that are more underrepresented than we would like. So I would hope that we have a plan and a timetable to look more deeply.
Yeah, I think there's two layers there, and some of it really fresh for us in the last few weeks. I think because we're creating an environment where this is so important to us, staff are opening up to tell us just how hard it is. And frankly, told us a couple of stories that were really hard to hear about comments that were said or things like that, that we can't just assume everyone's treating them the way that we might want. So I think that's one piece, but I think the other is really giving them a feeling of a cohort, just like that's in all the research of all, all subgroups of people need to feel like they're connected in a way that they're alike as well as among differences. So I think we're trying to establish that. And at this point, given the number of diverse staff, that may mean we need a district-wide affinity group. And we've been trying more at the building level, and I think we're reassessing whether that's sufficient.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. You mentioned cohorts, so my final one, the Ninth Grade Academy is a cohort model, which I think people are very hopeful about and favorably inclined toward. And I'll just pose it as a question that I would hope we consider over time, and that is the value of branding it with a title like that, is that?
Branding what with a title?
Ninth Grade Academy.
Ninth Grade Academy, calling out ninth grade as a ninth grade academy. I just think we ought to watch that over time and examine. What influence does that have on how that program evolves? How it shapes, how people identify with it and what it means to ninth grade.
Right, so we, there's a little story to the name already, and I think you make a really interesting point. You've intrigued me already. It's very traditional that high schools that have started this kind of approach in the ninth grade have called it a freshman academy to distinguish it being a different structure than the rest of the school, for good or bad, now that you bring that up. In our inclusivity discussions, Kristen Herbert insisted we call it ninth grade and not freshmen. She's going to change that name as a single human being, I think. So that's already evolved, but you make a good point of, is it just who we are as a high school? Or is it, and maybe one way or some sense to the other?
Names and labels relate to how one identifies. And I'm not suggesting I know what it means.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
I think it'd be something worthy of keeping an eye on.
Yeah, thank you.
I heard, thank you.
Go ahead.
So I had a comment about the Ninth Grade Academy. It's very welcome to see that students coming in from middle school and are treated a little bit differently and are supported as they have, they have a lot of needs adapting to new structure, new place, and new expectations. So it's great to see, and I know that a lot of what we're doing is coming out of challenge success and their evaluation. I have quite a comment, great work, and I'm looking forward to see the feedback that will be coming our way from parents of the current ninth graders and future ninth graders. Question is, is the climate survey that will be rolled out, will that be, will there be a particular focus on that group with questions so we can get a better understanding of, you know, what parents are asking, what maybe more comments specifically to the success of what has been already piloted at the ninth grade level?
Right, so the survey itself is a research-based survey that we're working with out of a nonprofit organization. So it's a set survey, it's not one that we can doctor because it's aligned with particular components of the research, and then it's triangulated across all three surveys. But that's not to say we won't have feedback. Now, if we do it this spring, these ninth graders won't answer based on Ninth Grade Academy. They'll base it on what they know, which actually is going to be an interesting baseline, I think. So we'll be able to sort them out in terms of how they view, certainly there'll be components related to that transition, even if it doesn't directly ask that. And then the intent of this climate survey is that you give it every other year. So two years from now, we'd be able to reassess with the ninth graders who are embedded in the program and start to look at what changed and where we're still needing to grow. So that doesn't mean we couldn't do a separate standalone survey just in terms of the academy itself. But I think we'll have some data we could extrapolate, be informed on how kids are feeling about their high school experience as a baseline for today.
That's a two years from now look, or next year look?
So this survey is designed to be given every other year. So we would give it this spring and then do it two years from now, but there's no thing to say we can't make our, because that's how the research is based.
But if you're changing the model so dramatically, wouldn't one of your strengths?
Yeah, we could talk about it, I would want their feedback, or we can make our own. I think either way, we could get data.
You've got them, watch it.
I think that we all have to realize, I'm sure the superintendent by now got some comments about it, but we all have to realize that the communities, anything else in education, there's always pros and cons in the community. And I already got the reactions of parents, of course, saying that we need to push them more rather than less. So we just have to, I remember my first year on the SAC in the middle school, I said something to Lee Beattie and the principal about homework, and she said to me, on every 10 parents that come into my office and say there's too much homework, there are the 10 that come and say too little. So I already got a note about the science, we have to push them more. So we just have to realize it and actually try and do the best that we believe is the right thing.
So I would echo what Heather said, Evan, watch this. I also, he mentioned a couple of things that, you know, we're aligning ourselves with DESI regs and mandates and that sort of thing. When I came on the committee, we were having a hard time implementing mandates. It was as if we were, this big elephant was sitting on us. And it's, you know, not just the strategic vision exercise that has helped us get to where we are, but there's a whole aspect of, you know, the way, the way you are managing the district from superintendentcy that allows for, you know, as Heather pointed out, the trust level that exists now in such a short period of time, because there was no trust here before you came in.
I'm pretty aware. You've noticed?
And, you know, to be able to turn that around and to do the kinds of things that have been done with a strategic vision exercise. And to look at that, I mean, that makes me tired. Just, I was hoping you, every slide was the end. I didn't want to see anymore. But it's extraordinary. And I think I commend you and your team for what you're doing. And, you know, I think we, we're going to look at our own goals here in a minute, but, you know, one of the things we sort of lose sight of is that, yes, we have a full complement of administrators now.
We do, really.
But most of them are in their first six months of being here. And I don't know about anybody else, but my experience on onboarding people has been that, you know, it takes six months to figure out where everything is. And so it's, it is a massive change, I know, from both people inside the buildings and people outside the buildings in the community are constantly pointing out the change. And many accolades for you and your staff, so that is not lost on me.
Thank you. So much of this is just the relationship building, which is what we're talking about with the kids. It's just as critical with the adults. I think that's what's grown, and then the sky's the limit.
Absolutely. Thank you also for taking the time to put this together. Because it does help us, one of the things we'll get to on our goals, of course, is executing that evaluation at the end of the year. And it's really helpful to have this halfway through and see where we are and see how much you've done already.
Yeah, it's a great point in the year. We're going to take a look at all the goals across the district at next week's administrative meeting. And it just lets you formatively look at where you are, course correct, weed out if there's things you're just not going to get to, you know, and just adjust. So, and then, oh yeah, wait, we kind of lost track of that one, you know, that kind of thing.
And that would be my one follow-up question. Is there anywhere, having looked at this and looked at your goals, that you feel like, wait, I need to adjust a little something here or there?
There wasn't really, that was validating, actually, when we did this. So it might be that the emphasis or the time has gone a little more one direction than I had thought it would, but nothing major.
Okay, great. Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments?
Just one question, are you doing Rivers and Carlisle?
Yes, yeah, they're setting the schedule up for March through, yeah, yes.
So on to first reading of the school committee policies. Let's kind of leave that.
Is someone giving us highlights?
I don't know if the committee wants.
So I'm sure Dave and you all can offer up additional information. What I can say is that there are no highly significant changes here. The references to MAS C were checked to see where it's identical. We make it known that it's identical. Where it's not, there's no reference to it in that way. The transportation policy was simplified to make it abundantly clear that if you're on a school bus, it's a school activity, period. No distinction between one kind of trip and another. And as to school councils, I'm not sure if we did anything more than reaffirming it.
The most significant change is the school improvement plan. Before, it had to be approved by us as school committee, and now it's by superintendent. But that's a change in the law, and it's still, the superintendent has to bring it to us. But the formal approval is superintendent, and that's a change in Massachusetts law.
So by July 1, it's in your hands for the following year commencing in September.
Yeah, after, but that's the main, the other enhancing, it's just we adopted a more actual NASC policy that according to the change. So that's the only, the only change in all those four policies is the approval by superintendent of school improvement plan rather than a school committee.
Dave, anything?
No.
Any questions for the school committee? These will be on the action items for next round to approve, I assume, right?
Yep.
Okay. Let's get to that variance report for the region.
So just like the Concord report, in front of you is a variance report by 100 function as well as the 1,000 function. This was run right at the end of the year. So at the end of the year, we had a positive balance, unencumbered balance of 2,172,857. Since that time, though, we have gone over many of the special ed tuitions. We have transferred some things into revolving accounts. So that number went down quite a bit, but we're still in great shape. And we're in good shape, there's no other way to say it, in really good shape.
Great.
So we're seeing a year in from the end of last fiscal year?
Say that again?
What is this? Is this?
No, so this is where we are as of 12/31/19, so end of the calendar.
So you're 2 million ahead still?
We're 2 million, right now, as of, yeah, as of December 31st, we're 2 million ahead.
Okay, and this is not, this is this year money?
Correct, yep. Yeah.
And if I'm correct?
Or something.
And you're not anticipating necessarily adding to your encumbrances, but maybe the opposite?
We will be adding. Some things you can encumber, such as, say, substitutes. But we will be adding when I, when we go through the budget, especially for maintenance and some of the equipment that we have not put in for yet. So it'll be a mix, but I'd like to think it's going to probably be more encumbrances than less. But as we go through special ed, especially the contract services, those always, even at the end of the year, as much as we try, there's always some adjustment.
Thank you.
This mirrors a little bit like last year. But like I said, we're in really good shape at the beginning.
Question on the 100, just clarification. If you don't have the answer right now, it's fine. 7300 equipment?
Yes.
What's the $57,000 adjustment?
What was the adjustment?
What's it, what did we do that, obviously, we weren't anticipating?
Oh, the 97,000, yep.
So it was 14, now to adjust it to 57 to a total of 71,000.
New equipment. We put in 52,000, but that was transferred from, I want to say, the 4,000s, which wouldn't add up. I'll get you that.
Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, just.
But I know, I know a big one is new equipment at the high school, copiers.
Oh, we had failing copiers, the old ones that come over from the old building. It was time, so we did invest in these copy machines.
Well, I think the idea was that they were going to get tossed out. Nobody needed them.
Yeah, that didn't play out that way.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, let us know if you have other questions.
Oh, it's that, and it's a, it's special ed, we bought a bus. So that was another.
Means small?
Small, yeah, it's actually what's getting the launch kids to and from the high school so they can be. they can be participative and all through the community.
Right, right. Okay. Those are pretty much the two big purchases.
So that was the motor vehicle line?
Twelve or 15, 12 passenger.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And just like I asked on the other, no directional surprises, obviously, things that change here and there, but no big, no big surprises. No. Great.
I think a good surprise is the tuition numbers that come in.
Yeah.
Getting kids in.
Great.
Thank you.
Ready?
Okay. Any questions for Jared? Um, school committee goals update.
Great. Let's talk about our goals. So we have them up here. I, I wish I could say that I had slides that showed that we were as productive as Laurie has been on her goals.
That won't be possible.
Unfortunately, that's not the case. But I did feel like, we both feel like, we need to go through this list that we put together at the beginning of the year and take a realistic look at it. It's now January, although our, you know, our fiscal year goes through June, but we have this set of the seven of us through basically the end of April. And I think we need to look at this list and figure out where exactly we are, what we've done, what we still need to do and what are the priorities to make sure that priorities fit into the next few months. And as Laurie said, sometimes mid-year you look and you adjust. And realistically, we might have to adjust, given all of the things here. So I wanted to just kind of go through first. Some of them we can all, you know, we can agree on the status to develop FY '21 budget and capital plans. We've done our part in that so far and we will continue to support it through town meeting. I think that's pretty clear. It's not something that's negotiable. I do want to keep in mind as we go through all of these, some of them, as we've pointed out, are yearly responsibilities that we always do. Some are up to us. And yet we want to keep in mind that strategic plan that is driving Dr. Hunter's goals and driving the district goals, and we want to stay aligned with that, I think. So just as, as a lens to look at this. So the yearly things are pretty standard. We will do the evaluation. And I'll put it out there, promoting community engagement and communication. That's, you know, I would say we're doing a pretty good job of that. We've gotten some good feedback recently, but that's kind of an ongoing thing. Anybody can jump in with thoughts on that.
If we're going to tick these off as we go, the only thing I would offer up is, I'm learning the value of individual invitations to community members. You know, we're doing all this other stuff, but I think we get good results also when we invite somebody to one of the community meetings, for example. So it's, it's extra time, but people like to be invited.
Yeah.
So for what it's worth.
Yeah, where we can, that makes sense. Okay. So specifically under our goals for this year, for Concord only support the CMS building project, I think is a, is a pretty clear given. I think we're, I would say, as a member of the Concord committee, that we're supporting it pretty well. Sorry?
Supporting each other? I want to, I want to back up one, if I may?
Yeah.
To Carlisle?
Okay.
If I'm correct, you're.
Yep.
You're down at.
Oh, you know what? I'm looking at.
How are we doing?
Sorry, sorry. Did I skip one on yours? I printed out what I thought was the last version. Is it not the same?
If we're just going through this line by line.
This is the late one.
Yeah.
I simply want to pose a question. It's midway, should.
Oh, sorry.
Should we be doing anything, can we be doing anything differently vis-à-vis Concord-Carlisle relationship? Not a leading question? I don't know, but just.
I have to call things, David.
We don't pause and ask it often.
Well, I'm happy that, Dr., who's coming tomorrow?
The whole high school administrative team.
Just for the ninth grade?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's something that I petitioned, have the Carlisle administration to ask for for, since basically the eighth grade, experienced as an eighth grade parent. And there was some, you know, flap, I guess, about the article that came out. But the fact is, maybe it had to get, you know, it had to get a little inflammatory press to get, I'm not speaking for Dr. Hunter, but for the Carlisle side to say, yeah, you know, maybe that is something good to do. So I'm glad to see it's happening because I think it will help the eighth grade parents a lot with the transition.
And I'll just say, and we're going a little sideways, but when my kids were in eighth grade, there was much more intimate sessions with the high school at each, now it's not, would be one, but each at Peabody and Sandborne. And I found those much less overwhelming than the, going to the high school. Because I thought that people much, much more free to ask questions of the faculty members.
Yeah, it's a scale, it's a scale thing, you know.
So it's just, it's just something to think about, maybe observe how the, the eighth grade goes at the CCHS and see.
Well, there's two different avenues. I mean, I, from, the thing I'm articulating is more parental.
No, I'm talking about the eighth grade parents now go to CCHS.
The kids love it, actually. Everything I have to say.
Right.
And I talk to, I know a lot of ninth grade parents and I ask them how their kids are doing. And everybody has the same thing to say. They love it. And they love it because it's a great school, but they love it because it's a freedom. I mean, these kids have been eight, in my daughter's case, 10 and a half years in one building.
Yes.
She's ready, like, thank you, but I'm going to another town. So I don't really have an issue with the kids. I really don't. I think it's the parents.
I'm not talking about the parent.
Yeah. So I want to make that clear.
Because, yeah. And, no, I was going to say, with the ninth grade academy and the changes that have been made, most of the time was talking about the science curriculum. And the rest of it was a little bit about the math and very little other questions.
Well, yeah, I mean, given that there was, there's that change, I mean, that's another good reason, in a secondary reason, but it's a good reason.
Anyway.
But it's just good to come and visit.
Yeah.
I'm really happy to hear that Rivers is coming, you know, I think that's great. And so Evan, you have anything?
Yeah, it's the, with the transition, especially for new families that they're sending their kids to high school, there's just an overwhelming amount of information that just keeps coming. And so having more opportunities to ask questions, it would be very helpful.
I've offered different, sorry.
Go ahead.
I've offered some offline suggestions to Dr. Hunter on sped transitions. I think there's still work to be done there, but, I mean, we don't need to debate it here. You got the message and I'm sure it'll be worked on knowing Dr. Hunter.
Yep. And, and of course, we do need to remember, these are our, we can't turn our goals, put something on here.
Understood.
That we list as our goals, that's really something that we're expecting Dr. Hunter to.
Of course you can.
So I just want to make sure that we are focusing on things that are actually our goals, not adding things to her plate above and beyond the goals that we've given her.
Yeah, but I actually wanted to say, I think that we, when we look here at, if I remember the original discussion, yearly responsibilities, improved communication coordination with Carlisle means us as school committee.
Exactly. That's what I'm pointing at.
And they zone to the finned.
In terms of how are we doing?
We're not, we're not speaking about the other thing. It's what we do in order to.
You know, I disagree. I have to say, I think first of all, we don't implement much or abort, we direct. So.
No, no, but that's the original conversation.
Okay. But, you know, putting, putting a focus on something that is implemented by the administration to me is fine. And I'm happy to see it's happening.
No, that's no problem.
Okay. So I'd, I'd say on all these, we're moving right along and doing our job here, which is good. So we can, we can keep going on that. So sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that.
No, no.
Now jumping to 19, to what, 2019, 2020 goals. I think, what I was saying is, I think on the Concord side, I would say at least, I think we're doing a pretty good job of supporting the building project.
Can you just back up one more time?
Oh.
About the superintendent review. So it's a different review process, right, with this new rubric? When are you going to begin to socialize that amongst us who've never done any type of review? So I guess it's not new for me. It's, I mean, I've observed it a little bit in the past years, but.
That's true.
What's the time for this process?
We haven't said an exact time. We're actually doing some planning in the next couple of weeks in terms of what fits into our, I would say it'll, it's not this month. It will come in advance enough of when we do this, which.
Right.
The evaluation needs to be presented in June.
As we know.
So we will plan some lead time so that we will socialize it first.
March, April, May, it's.
Exactly. So we might start that discussion in April. Start to make sure everybody understands it.
That big town meeting lately.
Exactly.
So Desi, Desi's released quite a bit of resources because we signed on for the pilot of the new rubric. So we've got tools to look at too and not just a discussion among ourselves.
Right.
And that's publicly available or is that something that's?
I'll forward you the email we got.
So there's no, because if I remember last year, there was a mid-year review. So the new.
The what?
A mid-year review.
Mid-year.
It's a goals update.
There wasn't a review, it was a goals update. It's what we did tonight.
Yeah. It, it looked a little different just because it was in a different format.
Everybody tried to be more explicit.
It was similar to what we, what we're doing with that.
It was more not challenging the process.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, just wondering.
Yeah, usually it does, I mean, it is one of the last things that gets completed for this fiscal year, which is, you know, it's sort of an oddity that the transition takes place after town meeting rather than at the end of the fiscal year. Especially because of that in particular is one of the things that, that and then in years where there's some challenging year-end financial issues, you know, you've got a committee that wasn't in place for most of.
Right.
The activity that took place.
So we do process-wise though, if somebody is completing their term, they participate in the review, not, let's say whoever's elected to fill it.
Understood.
Because obviously they were here.
Yeah. And typically, I mean, what we have done in the past, Joanna did this for two or three years in a row, but last year, Heather and I collated the input because you have to come up with a uniform assessment. So and everybody does theirs individually, either with Dr. Hunter individually. And then once we've had those, that input, you'll select somebody. I would recommend a pair. I think it's easier than one person trying to do it.
It's a big project.
And.
Okay.
And pull that all together.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. So that's yet to come.
Now it comes forward.
With a good, no, but with a good reminder that it is still a big project left to come. It's not checked off by any means.
Can you take a step forward?
You can, Yuval. I'm going to keep going forward now. So 2019 to 20 goals, I think we've checked, or we've addressed CMS.
Turn down the building project.
Complete CTA and CCTA bargaining, obviously we've been.
This is done, you complete.
Complete, right. That's still a big project on our plate, both of them, obviously.
And very much underway.
And very much underway, absolutely. Good progress, moving along. I think we're comfortable with where we are. Still a big time commitment going forward. The superintendent contract, obviously we have some time scheduled to talk about process. That's something that we still have to complete by the end of this year. Now, policy subcommittee process review, this was something I wasn't quite so sure as I looked at it yesterday, over the past couple of days, where this stands. My understanding is that you guys in the policy committee have kind of looked at the process and adjusted as necessary? And does that mean that a process review is complete?
Well, can you continue that conversation? I, I think the larger committee is giving us implied endorsement of the current process, which is to work our review systematically and insert where we believe it's wise, want to either out of order, move it up in the queue for review, or bring something new to the table. We've done both and it seems to be acceptable to the committee and we've been working with Laurie and the Roma on all of these as well, as well as with.
Dorothy.
The association. So it seems to me we have implied process.
Impplied process that includes judgment of the committee.
Yeah. Would others agree, Laurie?
I think so.
Comfortable with the process?
Yeah.
I mean, none of us are comfortable with the pace. Policy is slow work.
It is slow work and I think we're appropriately using time based on things that can move right along and slowing down where we need to.
Okay.
It's like work at Logan Airport. There's always something under construction.
Yeah.
And just to reference that to a point that David made last time and may come up later, if, I think it was regarding putting some of us on a working group, if we decide that some other things are high priority temporarily, I would think it's within the description that you just gave us, Court, that the policy subcommittee could say, well, the, the full committee has a, another big priority for the three months, we're going to put things on hold for a couple of months if necessary.
These are very easily put to a priority system. So we can do that.
So that, that is kind of inherent in the process that you've described. Great. I, I would say then that we kind of check off that one for now. Areas of awareness, we all knew this, these were just lenses by which we would look at things throughout the year. They're more reminders. I don't think there's anything on here that we need to check off. And in fact, the more we work with this list this year, I would say, we're going to format it differently next year so it doesn't look like such a long list when these items aren't actually items, but ways of looking at things.
And sustainability has become a lens for us. And I think is de facto.
Yeah, it has, that's true.
It's a constant.
Yeah.
Especially in.
Didn't want to be adding things to our list, Court.
No, we already did add it.
I know.
In the Concord public schools, it should, I think we all assumed, because of this, the town making a commitment at town meeting in a number of ways, that, you know, sustainability should always be a lens, you know? We could argue that, that definitely applies to the region as well, but.
Yep. I think that's.
It's been heightened a bit this year by the building project.
Exactly.
And the aspects.
That's what I'm suggesting. It's there already, whether we.
Competing and complementary actions there.
Yeah, true.
It's a good thing.
And then the bus stuff, the parking lot.
Yes, exactly. So updates that we desire, this is one, we're looking through it. I was kind of questioning some, but questioning what it is that we're all really looking for here. We've been doing a lot, we've spent a lot of time on other things so far this year that are not necessarily on this list. And we have this list of updates desired and I don't think realistically we can ask the administration to do six big presentation updates to us in the next three months. That's not realistic at all. Some of them we hear about a lot anyway. Some of them maybe we decide we don't need a presentation this month. So I just want to kind of go through and get people's thoughts on this and honestly see where we can pare it down and check things off, because I think we need to be realistic about the next few months. So from a Concord perspective, sorry, guys, I'm just jumping around because there are only a couple Concord things here. But from a Concord perspective, Spanish is something that we've, we've heard a little bit about. Is there a real, or I'm not sure if I should go one by one or have people jump in here?
Go one by one. Do it quickly.
Then is there a strong desire or need to hear about the details of Spanish this year?
I think it's curriculum, I don't see why it actually, it's nice to hear if the administration wants to bring it, but it's curriculum, it's not our, not our
Only if the program's gonna change.
What year are we in in the, in the Spanish program?
Three.
So is there anything unique about year three that is worthy of brief, brief attention and reporting to the committee and the public?
In Spanish.
You know, I think we've re-looked at some of the curriculum or revamping curriculum, they're building curriculum as they go because it's in year three, so for, you know, but it, it's still a growing program because the kids have it.
The kids are still aging.
All the way through Q5. So it's still a work in progress, getting better and better all the time. Kristen's brought in other resources to support the teachers as they develop it, we're
It's not like, it's to everyone.
For everyone, yeah, for everyone.
Special.
If it's developing, I, I would argue for a brief report. In the, in the way of extra work, I hope not. In the way of hearing from somebody, even in writing, who's already hugely familiar with it, I think it'd be useful if it's something that's
I mean, Kristen's gonna want to night to come and update you on her committees and outcomes and all of that, so we can give her, ask her to do
What's working, what's being tested?
A couple of highlights of Spanish with that, okay, is that realistic?
If we're, if it's highlights, yeah.
Highlights, yeah. I would, I would say that, I think we're gonna be asking for a lot from administration and so if we can keep that, we'll, we'll incorporate some high, high-level highlights into her update would be great. Back to the region, Q5, there's a lot of discussion about various, I mean, the, the work obviously that the administration's been doing on curricular things is amazing. Is this something that anybody's really attached to a detailed report on?
It's getting a lot of attention by school committee in the form of negotiations, it's part of what happens at the high school and everything at the high school is discussed. And we have a ad hoc working group looking at trips with Lori and others and Q5 is trips related, so I think it's getting lots of attention.
Getting covered, okay, so we can say
Do you think it's getting covered or you want to bring it out to committee?
I, well, it will ultimately, it will ultimately show up when we have something to say about trips, for example.
You have it in my way to incorporate it into the contract, so ultimately as a committee you're gonna have to talk about it.
Okay, so then, then I would say it's not, we're not asking for a specific presentation or update about it. It's something that we'll be learning about and talking about. I would suggest that we kind of cross it off of updates desired because we're not actually, actually asking for a big presentation on it, is that fair?
Exactly, it's happening, happening in another form.
Happening in another form.
It's happening in another
Happening, or we can, that could be our update, it's happening in its own form. Special education, I, I would say we hear a lot about it, it's important discussion that should continue, but
Coming, coming from, coming from CPAC, they would welcome more information included in our presentation about special education, so
So more information in other presentations related to that?
Uh, yes, and since special education is going through so many changes, the group of parents would like to have enough information coming as the changes are happening at the, at the schools. So I would suggest that there's, there should be more information rather than less focus on.
Okay.
The question, the question is, the place to do it is doing
Right, I'm not sure that that's necessarily a presentation to the school committee as just regular outbound communication to parents, right?
Like the session that
Like you're doing, a session in Carla.
That was a really, we were invited and some of us came, but the question is whether, because a large presentation of CPAC will take a full, a full evening of school.
Yeah.
I would go to the format that you did before, inviting them and inviting us to attend.
I mean, I think we get pretty regular updates here about what we're doing. Certainly satisfactory to me. And
Well, including information about what is getting done that addresses special education students in any presentation that, that, you know, comes to us, like the RTI or STEAM or whatever we are covering, parents want to hear, you know,
Highlight the relationships.
Highlights, yeah, so there is a, there, you know, those students are not, are in focus as well just as, as the other students.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I support Eva, I think, you know, we're both bed parents, so we have a bias here, no doubt, but new person, I don't know what his title is, Jared under
Teacher.
Teen chair, and that's all he does, right, he's not a teacher. So that's a change, he's been in place for, I don't know, half a, few months. Lot of resources are spent on him. I'm not sure, always effective from my personal view, and I think we should elevate it to the level of school committee and have, at some point this spring, an update by him and his team about what's going on.
The problem of this is that honestly, at Logan Airport, I, I totally understand where you're coming from. It is too wide, you know, we have to actually, maybe you that are more involved have to focus it a little more. Because a presentation of everything, it's just far too wide.
And you say everything.
No, no, you know, every change in the, I, I'm, I suggest actually that you, that know about it more will come with more maybe specific things that, that should be brought, because otherwise, it would be at least, it would be just far too wide to be able to actually touch
I mean, I'm, I'm saying, yeah, I mean
If, if there's a, it's funny, I was about to say, I support Eva also, but my comment was leading to a different outcome. I feel like what you're asking for is more mention of special ed connections and ramifications in whatever we're talking about.
So it's a lens.
So that it's a lens in a way, exactly.
So it sort of goes back to our discussion about the middle school.
Right, if we're talking about the middle school or STEAM or whatever, whatever it may be, that, that we're highlighting, how does this affect special education students in the program? And I think that's something that we could kind of, you know, be aware of and I'll be more aware of, and I think it's a good suggestion. I don't think that necessarily leads to a big presentation here because I think we're hearing regularly about things that are going on in special education.
Well, that we should be doing as we go along, that lends on special education as we are getting those presentations, that those students should improve it. But we, to, you know, to, to that, to the point of that David made, there are so many changes and we are the connection to parents, our presentations are the connection to the community, to the wider community, to understand what gets done at the school level. So having one presentation from the new director on what have we done, where, where is this special education heading, that would be welcome to, to those parents. So maybe having one of those
Okay.
So Lori
Is that, Lori, is that something that was, sorry, is that something that was in the works or planned anyway to have Ruth Grubie come back to us later in the year?
I've been waiting for feedback on what you did.
Feedback on this, on what we've
I, I think that, I, I think that there is enough apparently interest and, and it's, it's, it's a sensory subject, I don't think we should actually I think if I were to be able to suggest something, such a presentation should come by Ruth and do a kind of a very, as you say, how do you call it?
High level?
High level, and open, and open it to more questions. And then you can actually direct those that know more can direct the conversation to the future.
So basically having, asking her to come and give us kind of an update on what's happened this year?
And, and to be able to actually present her to, to the committee, to be able to ask a couple of questions and see
Actually, I was going with your first suggestion, you know, I hate to volunteer more time, but I mean, I would be, I would be okay with kind of working with Ruth and Jared, the other Jared, to hear what they have to say and filter it to help them distill it, because I do agree that just a survey course of what's going on is not particularly
No, I, I think that you're right, if, if, but that's it, because the people that are more in the know can actually direct this conversation to a much more useful
I wanna hear from Eva on this, because you're actually more involved than I am on CPAC.
I, I think CPAC can direct, can direct this conversation, what parents would, would like to hear at the end of this school year, towards this end of the school year, what has been done, what changes have been
So maybe we should, maybe we should be meeting with CPAC and get that feedback, or you can then, then filter that back, I don't, I don't know the mechanics of proceeding, but I think
Just to, you, and I wanna, because I'm not sure what's in the works already, you've done a couple of forums so far with CPAC, right? And are there others in the works already?
There's the one coming up next week, which is middle school building focused. I mean, we're happy to go to CPAC at any point and make that an ongoing dialogue and open that up for parents to come and listen and learn more, I think. We had the big one here and from that we followed up and had a very middle school-specific one, which allowed for a deeper level of interaction about middle school-based questions. Now we're having a middle school building-based one. Maybe I'm hearing we need to have a high school-based one and address some of the questions coming out of the high school, which would have a presentation component and a question and answer component. My only worry about doing it here is we, we're so pressed for time because our agendas get big. We might be able to go deeper at a, at a, another forum, another setting.
I think that could make sense, because if we ask someone here, we're asking them to do a ten-minute presentation and we have
We can only ask questions a period.
Things, right, another night, only we can ask questions, so does it get to your goals more?
Right, that's the question.
To your objectives more, to do more of a forum style again?
So, so the only reason, well, our meetings here are televised, those meetings are actually posted and posted to, and the link is sent out to the CPAC members, so I, I think accessibility of, of the information is wider if we are able to
But it'll be much more basic information because you cannot actually, you know, I've been here in the, you remember, I've been here in a meeting of CPAC and it was extremely well-attended, there are many, many parents in the room. And I, really for me it was, I'm not involved in CPAC, and each one had another view and another question, there's so many things, you know, that you give it two hours, there'll be two hours of questions, you give four, there'll be four. I don't see a, a way to actually bring a presentation like we do a acknowledgement or something and give a ten minutes kind of that we cover, it would be, it actually would be even maybe disrespectful to the subject because there's so many little things in the subject. It just, you can televise a, a session if you do it, a CPAC session with the parents, you can televise it. You know, but I, I, all I'm saying, it would be too ishewashi, sorry, it would be too much.
So I don't think we need to, we were just trying to catch up on our goals.
Yeah.
So I know CPAC is meeting this Thursday and I know they set their agenda, but perhaps they could have an emergency additional item and after hearing our conversation here and maybe give us a little guidance on, could it be a multi-prong approach or, you know, because it sounds like we're just all having good ideas, but
Right, but we're gonna keep it on our list of updates desired, it's not necessary, we, we're not gonna define what that looks like, but we're gonna continue to keep special education at the top of the list of desired commu, regular communication. Does that make sense? Okay, so it's in all of us.
We can actually even do a little more and move it up to areas of awareness and lens, because we actually are doing it, which means every decision we take, both in budgetary and everything, we check the influence on special education.
That's true, maybe, maybe we will.
I mean, you, you, Jared comes to every meeting and Jared gives an update at that level, but Ruth sometimes comes, sometimes doesn't, never gives an update. Mike doesn't come, doesn't give an update, I mean, what is the level at which you have staff updates for us?
I'm following what was happening when I arrived, which was, they only came for very particular agenda items and the business manager came to every meeting, so
And I like Jared, but why him and not the other ones?
When you said Jared goes to every meeting, what meeting is it?
This meeting.
That's very standard that your business manager would sit with the school committee at every meeting.
Our business manager, direct reports
I think that's a different discussion, it's
But there's other, like, of course, don't give up things.
I'm happy to have them here when there's an agenda item.
Well, I mean, it could be, I mean, this is maybe a next year thing, but maybe Spence should be in every meeting, I don't know.
I think we should talk about it, right.
That's, that's, yeah.
I think we get, I, I feel like we get regular updates, both in your superintendent's update and then discussions when there needs to be around specific things. You know, at, at some point, I think if the, if the need is to get information to parents, I don't think this is the right forum, because even though we're televised, I don't think there are a lot of special ed parents or any parents for that matter, who are sitting on the edge of their chair watching what we're doing here. We're here to do the business of
A few, but not a lot.
Well, I, I, I couldn't disagree, and I'm just gonna say the following, and we go through an awful lot of minutia here, in great detail, so to parse it and say, well, this is important and that's important, I'm okay with it, but I think it's an artificial lens, I mean, there's much more detailed stuff in this meeting than say we do at Carla. And that's okay, that's your style, but if you're gonna do detail, then we ought to examine what areas of detail.
I think it's good.
Yeah, maybe not for this year, but you guys are accustomed to much more detailed information that comes out of every meeting, with lots of meetings, so to say, well, Spence aren't, or isn't, you know, I don't know, I mean, hearing from the principal, that might not be bad, you know, I just think we ought to
It's a good comment.
take a broader look at that.
Okay, and just to be clear, nobody has said Spence not important, that's, that's not up for debate.
Right.
Okay.
Is RTI sort of a sub
Yeah, I think that's kind of a sub, yeah.
I mean, I'm not a professional, I'm just asking.
Oh, it's not under special education?
Well, we heard about it tonight.
But we've heard about it, yeah, tonight. I would say we check it off, we've heard about it several times, it really, we hear about it within, exactly.
And you'll get updates on all the school appropriate plans?
On all the school appropriate plans, so I would say that's happening. STEAM, I think we've
There was a presentation, some of us actually attended the day here.
Right.
I'm, I'm happy with this year, and it'll be in development in a year or two.
Great, done, checked off the list, that's nice. It makes sense to me.
Spent a couple of hours here, had, you know, and it was open to all of us.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I was heartened to hear tonight when, in their presentation, I'm going to civics education, how that was the component of there, I was just, I was, I was really pleased, that was great. And if, you know, Kristen's come to us and she has a couple of slides, that's fine. I'm confident that the teachers, I have to trust that they feel like this is an important responsibility through all of their curriculum to focus on public policy, participation, voting, et cetera. So it's either they're excited about it or they're not, and I don't think you can, you know, a presentation's gonna make that change dramatically, so I think it's very important, but I don't need a update.
A presentation, okay.
I never understood what does an update design, we tried to put it in areas of
Yes.
Well
Well, I think, I think we were, we were responding to a trend toward lesser attention to it.
Yes.
Saying, let's
Let's hear about it a little bit.
Let's see it on our list, let's pay attention to it in one way or another because we expect that others throughout the district are gonna do the same.
And we're happy to have civics be this year, at least.
Right, so there's probably, okay, so we're, we're not actually asking for a report.
We're working on a census right now, I'm Yes, the census as well, yes, thank you. So, that's a huge one. Different connections. Yes, great.
Okay, terrific, then there's some housekeeping, some of it became bigger than what seemed like housekeeping. The regional agreement, I meant to touch basically on this, where are we with that?
Yeah, I think
We gotta put that aside for now.
I think we agreed at most we would put it all into one document, which we've done.
Right, and that's done?
So, yeah, it's in a, it's not in those typed pages from 1970, whatever, it's now a word document, so
That was the only change.
That was what we agreed to do.
So there we go, we updated it, check.
Check.
Wonderful, thank you for doing that for us.
But we're not gonna update it, but we're not touching the
Well, it updated it in terms of technologically updated.
I don't think that's what this meant, but yeah, well, that's where we landed.
But we did, we did, we did have a group discussion and decided that was all we wanted to do, so
We actually, yeah, we actually did have a discussion about it.
Yes, we did.
We moved it, it's something that we did.
That's not a discussion, just for clarity, we concluded that we could make changes, but didn't have to.
Right. Thank you.
Right.
Okay, let's pass it through.
Okay, so to keep moving, we said that we would support administrative onboarding process, I don't know that we've done much to help you in that, is there anything else that we can do to help you in this process?
Stay out of the way.
Okay, stay out of the way, should we put that on our list? Stay out of her way.
Well, Dr. Hunter said it, that's Stella said you encourage good people, I understand.
Let me try to get through the housekeeping so we can be done with this.
Yes.
Yuval, can we focus please?
So I am actually
Thank you, we have established plan for a facilities use fees review, is that
I'm very, very interested in doing that, I, you told me that you're gonna map out for us the meetings
Right.
of the year, so I'd like you to fit, fit that in somehow or another.
Try to fit that in.
It would be a couple of sessions.
A couple of sessions, as in, review it, a couple of, review it in a couple of meetings.
I'm willing to do the work.
The work's done.
Okay, well, I'd like to see the work, because I have No, we haven't gotten to it, I, I will share a little concern about the load of stuff we're gonna have from February till June, right? These haven't been changed over eleven years. Eleven years now, I know.
Right.
And we've got a whole new facility, it's, I think, it's a dereliction of our duty in terms of potential revenue from private parties, or at least examine it.
To examine, okay, so let's, can I suggest, I have, so I've heard from Cynthia and I haven't heard from anybody else on
I, I consider this very doable, and I think we can help out, we don't have that many data sources to go to, we have a handful of other like districts, we have our own costs to look at, we have already known what is open for community use on a fee-based way, so we're updating what exists.
We're constrained by, by agreements in terms of charging certain parties.
We adopted a two, a two, a two-fee structure in about 1987, and we've just updated it every two years since then, more or less. So I think we can, we can check, check that table and see if
And this is just for the region?
See if the administration wants to make changes based on keeping up with current costs.
That's regional. That's region only.
Yes.
Can I ask, why is it at all a school committee question and not businessman?
You set the rates.
We set the rates? Okay.
Because it's fine.
That's an answer.
It's, every district does that.
And can you, like this, give us a bulk figure of what are we talking about?
No, no, that's another night. That's what I'm saying.
We will keep it on the list. Let's try to schedule this.
We'll only have the meeting tonight.
Okay, so finished trip approvals for FY 2020 trips. We've done. We're going to check that off. And the last one is review the trip approval process, which I know is in the works.
I had a very productive meeting today and the encouraging news, I think, is that Lori is prepared to, and I think eager to bring a process to us whereby initial approval and final approval are quite similar in nature for any recurring trips. And secondly, that we build into the process almost unequivocally, final approval is necessary before monies are collected so that we don't pre-obligate parties to take action that they're not ready to take. Thirdly, that we've got a fair level of confidence that by the last meeting in June, the known trips, which would be most of them for the following school year, would come our way, recurring trips for initial, final and new trips for initial, final to follow shortly thereafter. Does that capture it, do you think, Lori?
I think so. I think that's the summary of what we're starting to go towards.
Okay, so it's in process. Thank you. And it certainly stays on our list because clearly we need to finish it. So I will just quickly wrap this up to say, I think this is good. I think we've narrowed it down a little bit. Some of it we've completed, which is great. What that leaves us with in terms of big things to focus on really is obviously continuing to support the budget through town meeting, whatever that is, completing our superintendent evaluation, continuing to communicate with the community, supporting the building project, completing our bargaining, renewing our superintendent contract, and creating, reviewing the use fees and finalizing the trip approval process.
So we don't need so many meetings?
As items to check up. That's going to be.
That's just your list. There are three current things you have to do this spring.
Right, and there are a lot of other things that come up that just have to happen every year. So that's a lot to do in the next few months. So I would suggest, why don't we do this? Each of the chairs is going to be meeting with Lori soon. We have meetings set up to just kind of plan out the rest of the year. So why don't we take these that we've discussed, start to put them into time slots in the meetings for the rest of the years and come back with suggestions.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Transportation working group. The, I don't, I haven't heard from anybody that they want to be involved in this. I did take the presentation from last year's Article 16, which was the ring road and the parking lot. I've made adjustments to focus just on the parking lot. I just got it to these guys today for some review. Given that we aren't going to meet again for a while, why don't, after you guys have taken a look at it, we'll send it around. If you've got any comments, please contact me. And I think what we can, you know, this can be something we can use if we have a group we want to talk to. At that next February meeting, we should chart out some opportunities to just get out and have a couple of budget conversations and article conversations about this particular thing in the month of March. Anyway, we've got time, but. But in the interim between now and the 24th or whatever the next meeting is, once we've got a presentation and everybody's given me any input they want to give, you can use it.
Okay.
Between now and then.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure. So can we move on from that?
So does that mean we don't need a working group because you've just done it for us?
I just want to remind that the agreement here in this group was that we will try and come to town meeting with a twist, with something new.
And we just approved it for electric buses.
That's good enough.
It's pretty new.
It's fun.
I think we discuss it the next meeting. We have to.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, there's a lot going on right now. There's a town committee being created on transportation. I think, I think just, we've reached out to mothers out front. I think this is, you know, in a good space from where it was a month ago. I think right now probably best for us to just let some of this unfold and see. I know that we will be invited to be, to have superintendent or a designated, designated to be a school committee member to participate in the transportation, the town transportation committee. I think as Brian pointed out, it would behoove us from a budgetary standpoint to be involved in the townwide push for this rather than, you know, get too far out over our skis on our own.
No, I totally agree. So that's good.
So when we speak about when the chairs are actually putting things on the agenda, I want to remind everybody that the agreement in the meeting before last was that this warrant article will come back to see whether we continue with it or not continue with it. So please put it time enough that we.
We can pull it and support town meetings for one.
Yeah, but we don't want to do all the work and put it.
Using plan for a follow-up discussion in some way.
Clear understanding that we have to be convinced that we come to town meetings more than we had last time.
Okay.
So let's move on to action items. The, this is for both districts and just going to have a motion for both that the Concord and Concord-Carlyle School Committee has thought to approve following staff request to enroll their children in Concord Public Schools, Concord-Carlyle Regional School District, beginning in August 2020 and tuition be waived. Those students are Nate Jensen, nurse at CMS, two sons to enroll in sixth and eighth grade. Sarah Gieselback, teacher at CCHS, daughter to enroll in ninth grade. Morgan Lannigan, teacher at CCHS, I'm sorry, Michael Lannigan, teacher at CCHS, son to enroll in ninth grade. Lauren Maruso, teacher at Alcott, son to enroll in kindergarten. And Kristen Saunders, teacher at Willard, daughter to enroll in ninth grade.
So.
For both?
For both.
Yes.
Second?
Second for both.
Thank you. Any discussion? Glad we're able to do this.
Yes.
And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll, well, we'll do the votes separately. All in favor for Concord?
Aye. All in favor for the region?
Aye.
Any opposed on either? Okay. Thank you.
Next item is to approve the 2021 calendar. And do we have a motion for this?
Are we ready?
The 2020 calendar.
We, we say that we've got all our decks in a row?
We do.
Okay.
I know what you're asking.
We can give it a go, Molly? Congress Concord Public Schools and the Concord-Carlyle High School calendar for the year 2020, 2021 be approved as submitted this evening.
Second for both.
No, go ahead.
Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I want to bring a few things that have changed since we brought you the draft. And since I want to be thorough, so bear with me for a moment. The professional days will be the 27th and 28th. The kids will be back on the 31st. We are still in discussion with the kindergarten staff as to whether they will start that same timeline. They have concerns just over the readiness for a four day, three and a half day week off the bat rather than a shorter week. So that's one piece that hasn't been totally set, but we thought we're close enough on everything else to bring you the rest of it. We relooked at the high school conference day and have elected to go with the November 5th piece with a tentative plan that when we set the early release dates that are not on here yet, those four high school dates, one will go before the November 1st college deadline and bill a half day in for the seniors to work on things, which is some of what the debate was about, whether we go the last week in October or the first week in November. The middle school conference day inadvertently got put in November and should have been in December all along. So we've now moved that to December 3rd. The rest, I think, is as you saw it last time. As mentioned, half day before the break in December, so 23rd would be a half day. Second conference day for the elementary schools in April and I think the rest is as you saw. It was more challenging than it seemed.
So those caveats fit nicely into the as submitted, I think.
Yes, they do.
But I'm glad you voiced them all. Okay.
Just a question, sorry, a question on the kindergarten discussion. If they or you, if the decision is that kindergarten should start later, that does not, they are not tied into 180 days, correct? So they could start a day or two later and it doesn't affect their.
Kindergarten is not required, so you get quite a bit of.
I just wanted to highlight that so we all know. We're not going to keep the kindergarteners in school two days longer than everybody else.
No shadow of a question.
Right, exactly.
Any other, any other questions? Parents probably like that. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that I was, the staff worked really hard. It was very thoughtful and they're willing to change their minds and in a, again, thoughtful way. And good discussions, you know, because it's a complicated thing, a lot of moving blocks with the region and middle school and high school. So it was, you know, very interesting discussion.
Yeah, we were thorough. It took a while to make sure we didn't miss anything, but that is because they were thorough.
Because every year, that little shift at the beginning and and they try things one way one year and they try things one way another year and it's interesting.
It's a different discussion every year.
Where is Carlyle?
I shared, Jim and I have exchanged this, so I know they've had it. I think you were looking, starting this.
We're voting tomorrow.
Second of September.
Yeah, we're starting later for some reason. I'm not sure why, but.
Because this is an unusual start, probably why.
Yeah, it's the late Labor Day.
Well, they have, yeah, well, that's the main reason.
Yes, the late Labor Day.
Okay, so all in favor for the region?
Aye.
And all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And thanks from the committees to the team that worked on this. Okay.
Last up, but two of them. Just so the Carlyle folks know, in our Concord portion, we had a vote to finance for bus financing and we moved it up to do here as well since it's all part of the same discussion. We didn't want to repeat discussion. So just so you know, we'll be voting both, not just the region right now.
Do you, I mean, we're pretty clear on this. Do you have anything you want to?
Nope, we had a bid last week. TD Equipment Financing was the lowest submitted bid. Interest rate 2.52 over five years. Pretty aggressive, pretty good.
But we're voting for the three we're buying or financing through a lease. What about the two that you?
We're going to need to hear, they need to.
There'll be another time.
To do a little more work. Hopefully by the next regional meeting.
The electric.
The electric, yeah. Hopefully by the next regional meeting.
Separate, yes.
All right.
Do something on that. So can I have a motion that the Concord-Carlyle School Committee votes toward the contract for the financing in the fiscal year 2020, purchase of three school buses to the low bidder TD Equipment Financing, Inc., with a rate of 2.52 for five years.
So.
Seconded.
All, any discussion? All in favor for the region?
Aye.
Aye. And we will move back to the, I'm sorry, find the right link. The vote for the CPS one, I would, basically the same discussion. It's two school buses. So I would take a motion that the Concord School Committee.
No, only three.
Two.
Two for CPS.
Oh, forget it.
Okay, so I'd take a motion that the Concord School Committee votes to award the contract for the financing of the FY 2020 purchase of two school buses to the low bidder TD Equipment Financing, Inc., with a rate of 2.52% for five years.
So.
Seconded.
Any further discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, both pass. And.
Take a motion, oh, Jared.
Well, we need a motion, we need a motion for both committees to move into executive session that the Concord School Committee and Concord-Carlyle Regional School Committee will enter into an executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy to respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body.
Some moves for both?
Second for both?
And we need, vote by roll call.
And we will not be returning.
And we will not be returning to session, to public session.
Hello, Mr. Duffy, for region, aye.
Randy, aye for both?
Yuval, aye for both?
Booth, aye for both?
About aye for both?
Tristan, aye for both?
I'm aye for region.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
See you right after.